Paul, are you host now?
You're muted, Paul.
Sorry, Mary. Yes, I am in and I am designated as a host.
Okay, and it's being recorded?
It is.
Okay, so I think I did it okay?
Yes, thank you, Mary.
Oh my gosh, my first one.
Good job, Mary. Is Larry on board?
I'm here.
There you go.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Are we ready?
Ready. Let's go.
I'll call this meeting to order. Mr. Zarzaki, can you please call roll?
Ms. Chick?
Here.
Mr. Kuzno?
Here.
Mr. Dryer?
Yep.
Mr. Quinto?
Here.
Ms. Infante?
I'm here.
Mr. Roman?
Here.
Mr. Zarzaki present? All seven present.
Thank you. Make a motion. We adopt the agenda.
Support.
Or by Ms. Chick. Any questions, comments on that? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed? Call to the public. Mr. Lippens, we'll let you take that. Three minutes. Please state your name and address. Time limit is three minutes.
Thank you, Chair. At this time on the agenda, we will open it up for public comments. We have no public hearings on the agenda tonight. So now would be the time for any members of the public to address the planning commission. We do have a final call to the public at the end of the meeting as well. So just a reminder to please clearly state your name and address so it can be recorded for the minutes. And you will be given three minutes to speak. I do see right now that there are two attendees in the audience who have raised their hands indicating that they'd like to speak this evening. The first participant I'd like to acknowledge is Carrie Val Messi. Carrie, I hope I got your name right. I'm going to allow you to talk. Are you there, Carrie? Carrie? Carrie, it looks like you have unmuted yourself and Planning Commission is taking comments. I'm going to go ahead and mute Carrie and lower Carrie's hand. Please look, raise your hand again if there was a malfunction and you would like to speak. The next attendee I see with their hand raised is David Gordon. David, I am allowing you to speak and you will have three minutes when you're ready.
Hi, this is David Gordon. How am I road? Can you hear me all right?
We can.
Great. I wanted to commend you for having a special meeting to help facilitate the conditional uses and site plans for the marijuana businesses, which hopefully will help jumpstart a business revival downtown and throughout the community. I would also like to recommend that you recommended the board that they change the ordinance for pot, which at the moment allows grow operations in the rural area and instead limit them to commercial industrial manufacturing areas because they're much more appropriate there. And having a large grow operation, indoor grow operation under the lights with security and all the trappings of marijuana growing is not something that should be plunked down into large lot residential areas. Hopefully that can be changed in a short time. And lastly, I would encourage the planning commission either directly with a motion or indirectly through conversations with the Board of Trustees to encourage the board to not sell off 75 or 80% of the North Village Park for residential and instead follow the North Village plan, which calls for half of the property being a park. I would recommend building the park first, seeing the impact that it has, and then possibly considering mixed use with commercial and residential on the remaining property. I believe you get a whole lot more money for the remaining property if you had a vital and vibrant lakefront park up and running. So those are my two comments. Thank you very much for your service and I'll look forward to the rest of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Appreciate it. I'm going to go ahead and mute you. I do see that Carrie Val Messi has raised her hand again. I'm going to unmute Carrie again. Carrie, if you have a comment, please address Planning Commission. You have three minutes. Carrie, are you there? Carrie? Carrie, I'm going to give you one more chance. Would you like to address Planning Commission? Okay, you may be having some technical difficulties. I'm going to just remind you that there is an opportunity to speak to Planning Commission at the end if you can work out your difficulties. We would love to hear from you at the close of the meeting. Chair, I am not seeing anyone else at this time with their hand raised. Oh, I see one person. Adam has their hand raised. Let's give Adam a chance. Adam, I'm allowing you to speak. Please state your name and address and you have three minutes.
Adam Olney, 9315 Lakewood Court. I just want to thank the Planning Commission for scheduling this special meeting, like Mr. Gordon said, to handle this in a timely manner. I'd also like to thank you guys for your professionalism in handling this. Whether people support it or don't support it, I really feel like the Planning Commission has done a great job handling this in a professional manner. So thank you. I look forward to tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Olney. Appreciate your comments. And Chair, I do not see anyone else with their hand raised.
Thank you, Mr. Lippens. Clarifications from commissioners, are there any? I see none. Everyone received correspondence, A being the scoring memorandum update from McKenna and B is the remaining marijuana correspondences. Everyone receive those? I see heads nodding. There's no public hearings tonight. We'll go to reports of committees. Board of Trustees report, Ms. Chick.
Actually, the Board of Trustees met last night, handled a lot of pretty mundane business. We did discuss adding a public wireless hotspot at fire station number two. And we will be doing that as well as having a cellular, I'm sorry, hotspot at behind the public safety building. So that should be up and coming really quickly. We also extended the time for the completion of the sale of 75 Barker due to finding ground pollution from the previous underground storage tanks. And I think that closing will probably be around October 15th. And we also request, I'm sorry, discussed a request from Chestnut Developers who's looking at doing something at the Leland property, about 90 acres. They are interested in putting in a water system there. And we wanted to let them know that we were not interested in either having any authority over it or maintaining it if they decide they want to do that. So and then the wastewater treatment plan bonding process, we received that timing schedule, including the postcard mailing and the information for the meeting. And I believe those postcards are going to go out on September. One second, I want to make sure of the right date. September 13th, the postcards should go out. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chick. ZBA report, Mr. Kuzno.
ZBA has not met since our last meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything from staff, Ms. Bird?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Planning Consultant report, Mr. Lippens.
Thank you, Chair. I would just like to briefly let Planning Commission know that we are still working on some reviews for the packet for next week's meeting. But do anticipate the cases we discussed being on an agenda for next week's meeting. There is one applicant who had previously informed us that they were working with their engineers to give us comments by or revisions, complete revisions by the 31st, which is going to result in us having to do a pretty quick turnaround for the packet. So I just wanted to give Planning Commission a heads up that my intent would be to put everything we have for that applicant in your packet and then issue potentially an update for this applicant in advance of the meeting. I'm happy to take questions, but I've been corresponding with this applicant about their timetable regularly. I know that they are doing their best basically to take all the township's comments and incorporate them onto the site plan so that they have 100% addressed everything that everyone on staff has asked for. And I did email with them today and confirm that they are still on schedule. I need to talk with Marcus about whether or not we can expedite their reviews once that plan comes in. But that's what I'm working on. So just letting you know that we and certainly also the applicants are doing their absolute best to move projects along quickly and get all the comments addressed. So that is my report for this evening.
Mr. Kuzno?
I have a question for Mr. Lippens. Paul, on the scoring sheet for the marijuana businesses, under public safety, it says 1,000 foot distance from, there's two different categories. I have to look it up here real quick, but it was churches, parks, and for school. So number one was a school and then number two was library, daycare, or park. My question is, is that directly related to the ordinance that we're dealing with for these scoring?
No, those are scoring criteria, locational scoring criteria that is not codified in the ordinance. So applicants can be within those distances from either school or library and comply with the ordinance. The score would give them extra locational criteria for the additional distance from those sensitive uses.
Okay, so what is the codified distance? 500 feet?
It's 1,000 feet from a like business. So they have to be more than, or 1,000 feet from another facility and then 500 feet from the school.
And that's, so park and library were not part of that actual ordinance?
Correct.
So why doesn't it say on that same criteria, why doesn't it say 1,000 feet from another facility?
That, well, that's one of the ordinance standards.
Why doesn't it say that in your scoring sheet?
Well.
May I interrupt?
Sure.
And after, if you'd like to answer this, Mr. Lippens. Mr. Kuzno, these are points of discussion that would probably be better suited during the discussion of the cases, but if Mr. Lippens would.
I'm referring to the letter that he gave us that you said was part of his report. Isn't that true? I included the memorandum as a correspondence, not as an agenda item. But I mean, now is a fine time for you to ask the questions. I think the direct answer to your question, Commissioner Kuzno, is that the scoring was prepared as part of a board committee. And, you know, we went through the items and discussed wanting to add those additional location requirements to the scoring. But with respect to the codified standards, that's a part of the regulations. So if someone cannot meet those regulations, they wouldn't, they would either have to get a variance or not be eligible for zoning compliance. Thank you.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation report, Mr. Ray Quinto.
Yes, sir. Thank you. So the play path that is along Barker, which was a project grant funded through the Parks and Rec is complete. That was completed last Saturday. It was a three day project with a group of people. The ribbon cutting ceremony is this Saturday, the 29th, from 11 to 12 at 75 Barker. There will be refreshments along the play path. There are a lot of different parts to that from paintings on the ground where there's a maze, there's different parts there, there's hand toys like, or hand items like a tic tac toe, there's a chalkboard, and then there's another set of musical instruments. So I'm encouraging everyone to please take time and take a walk along that play path along Barker. It is a really good venue for families with kids and/or adults. The Bark Park is noisy and well utilized. It is very clean and I'm encouraging people in the community to utilize it for their pets, their dogs. The community garden, we have purchased a shed for that. We will be putting that up within this fall. And the community garden is very well utilized. The Parks and Rec at our last meeting, which was last Thursday, we've made them, I'm going to read the motion that we made that we are passing on to the Township Board. It is strictly a request. The Parkin Board requests the Northfield Township Board of Trustees to keep, not inclusive of the lakefront, at least 12 acres of the total of the North Village site to remain a park for the benefit of the residents of Northfield Township. So I'm hoping that our rep, Ton Bellin, Ton took that to the board yesterday in their meeting. If not, maybe Ms. Chick, you could take that to the board in another meeting for the residents of the township. And that is it, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Downtown Planning Group report, Ms. Infante.
The DDA is meeting this evening, so unfortunately I won't be able to report until next meeting. But I do know that the play path ribbon cutting is top of the discussion and I hope it's well attended.
Thank you. There's no unfinished business tonight. And takes us to new business. Mr. Ray Quinto?
Yes, sir. Thank you. I am abstaining from any action items, discussion for the marijuana license applicant. So I am removing myself from this conversation as I have submitted a letter, a statement to the Township Attorney and to our Township Manager. That has been my plan all along. So I am recusing myself at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. So under new business, Mr. Lippens, so you know, we will go through each item separately, being, one being the conditional use and then the next being the site plan, the site plan review for each of the applicants, each of the three applicants. So when you do your review, if you could just limit it to each separate one and we'll do it that way since it's listed out separately. Is that okay? Very good. And I know, I see we have Mr. McNamara available also. And I believe his reports reflect more for the site plan reviews also. So with that, we'll go to new business age case JPC 200002. Recommend to approve, approve with conditions or deny the request of GS Ashley LLC, the 22 Barker and 9615 Main Whitmore Lake for conditional use to develop the existing structure into an adult use and provisioning center. Adult use and provisioning centers are permitted as conditional land use in the WLDD district per Article 12, Section 36-340 of the zoning ordinance. Parcel numbers B-02-05-253-005 in zone WLDD Whitmore Lake Downtown District. Mr. Lippens, do you feel we will give the applicants opportunity to address the commission regarding their proposal? If they could limit it to less than five minutes?
Yes. So I know that I didn't instruct any of the applicants to limit presentations to five minutes this evening. I happily do that in the future, but since this isn't a public hearing, I thought there might be more of a back and forth. But I'm sure the applicants do have comments and are available to speak this evening. Let me look through the audience to see who we have here representing GS Ashley. I know we have Steven Etsy. I'm sorry, ST, sorry, Steven. And I know Nate is here. Let's see. Nate, allow Nate to talk. Then Steven, who else is here from your team?
So I think Nate Padred, Josh Genderson, James Khan, and then we have Sarah Stretchberry. Sarah, I don't think is going to speak, but we'll have James and Josh and Nate.
Well, I'll go ahead and allow Sarah to talk as well in case she does need to speak. Okay. I think I have your whole team here. Now let me see. I'm hi, are, so Nate, are you seeing the option of turning video on right now?
No.
Okay, so I think that I'm not seeing the ability to make you a video participant. So I think the way the meeting was set up, that wasn't an option. Did you have any exhibits that you would like to show this evening?
Yeah, Sarah was, Sarah was going to run through those.
Maybe Sarah, could you email your presentation to me? Is it small enough?
You know, we actually, we didn't realize that we were only going to have five minutes. So the presentation would probably go beyond that. I'm hesitant to email the entirety of it to you. Is there a way that I can share my screen?
I don't think that, well, unless, do you see a screen share? Oh wait, hold on. No, only panelists can share.
I have a suggestion, Mr. Lippens.
Yep.
I don't know if the applicants are aware that we're going to separate the discussions as to conditional uses and then the site plan. So if they want to combine a presentation, perhaps we can allow them such as 10 minutes and they can present both things. And then we can, as a commission, go on and discuss, discuss each separate item and go from there. Would that be better for the applicants?
Yeah, I think that would be better for us. And Mr. Lippens, I'll go ahead and email that to you now.
Okay.
If we make them panelists, can they share a screen?
I think that we could. And normally I see that as an option, but I've got to be honest, I'm not seeing an option right now. So it could be, oh wait, hold on. I can do that. All right.
Okay, wonderful.
All right, so Sarah, I'm going to promote you to a panelist. First, all right. And then Steven, I'm going to promote you to a panelist. And Nate? Let me find you.
If there's also design and architecture, site plan related questions, we have our architect, Joe Alter is on as well. She can answer.
Who's the architect, Nate? I just promoted you to panelist. So you should be able to share your video now, I think, if you want to talk. Josh Genderson. Promote to panelist. And James Khan, promote to panelist. Is there someone else here?
Vince Canalis, please, as well.
One more time, Sarah.
Vince Canalis.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and share my screen.
Perfect.
Thank you. Thank you. And Nate, are you there?
And hold on, just got kicked off and now I'm back on.
Great.
All right. Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Lippens. Good evening, Commission. We're excited to partner with Northfield Township for this new use. As you may know, GS Ashley was one of the first to get involved in Northfield well prior to the ordinance being in existence even. We've been invested in the community for over a year and a half now and I fell in love with the family video site when I first saw it empty and available back in early 2019, late 2018. We look forward to becoming an integral partner in the development of the downtown while bringing new life into a long shuttered business at the point intersection, really the main intersection of Whitmore Lake. From the presentation of the public hearing, we know you're aware of our strong local presence in Washington and Michigan, including being one of the first approved retail centers in the state. We have a long history of working collaboratively with city staff, boards, and elected officials and other stakeholders to get big projects done. A fact that we can, that is attested to by our numerous letters of support. We were pleased that your planning consultant, Mr. Lippens, has confirmed that the standards for conditional use and site plan approval have been met. And tonight we were going to focus on the three to five conditions. But now that we're out of time, I think we'll mainly focus on a little background of our business and then the mostly a new development option that's kind of arisen over the past few weeks for Barker and May. We've worked hard and taken a long road to be here in front of you. And we want to have a long and faithful, fruitful partnership with the township. To that end, there's a memo we created that we would love for you to have with valuable insights into our operations drawn directly from our application. Now I'd like to hand things over to my partner and holistic industry CEO, Josh Genderson, to demonstrate why GS Ashley and Holistic Industries did a great job addressing the merit-based criteria.
Thanks, Nate, and thanks, everybody, for giving us some time to talk. I must say it's pretty amazing what you can do with Zoom on the fly. So my name's Josh Genderson. I'm the founder and CEO of Holistic Industries and we are partners with GS Ashley. I founded Holistic 10 years ago as the first cannabis operator on the East Coast in Washington DC. Um, I founded Holistic ten years ago, um, as the first cannabis operator on the East Coast in Washington DC. Um, over the past ten years, uh, we've been able to win merit-based licenses, um, in seven states and, and the city of DC. Um, we were able to open twenty dispensaries around the country. Um, I have eighteen community partnerships that we've set up. Um, prior to starting Holistic, I, I took over a seventy-year-old family business in DC that my grand, great-grandfather founded. Um, and, and the goal for me was really just not to screw it up. Um, you know, the odds are stacked against you by, by then. Um, but I, you know, I, through a lot of hard work and, and through hiring people smarter than me and giving the tools, uh, to them that they need to, to be successful, I was able to grow the company about ten times in size and, and in revenue. And, um, and, and it really gave me the confidence to start this company and, and, you know, that business was a wine and spirit company, a vertically integrated company. And so, um, with a background in a, in heavy regulation and, and, um, and in wine and spirits, you know, I, I had been very interested in cannabis all my life and, and, and its, and its ability to, to help people and change people's lives. And so, um, you know, the reason I bring up the family business is because I, part of our success and part of what's, what's made us the largest privately held cannabis company in the country is, is being fiercely local and fiercely loyal, um, to our, to, you know, the towns which we operate. Um, and so, uh, finding GS Ashley and, and building a partnership, um, and, and, you know, entering Michigan and, uh, we spent over thirty million dollars to date in the state. Um, we have, uh, you know, we opened Greenstone, which is our first store in Ann Arbor, um, in twenty sixteen. Um, and then we opened, uh, Liberty Detroit and Corktown. Uh, we're currently in the middle of building a sixty-five thousand square foot, uh, vertically integrated facility in Maston Heights. Um, and, you know, uh, as, as somebody who's gone out and raised money and, and, you know, been operating for so long and, and, you know, as a company that's, that's, uh, you know, on, on a hundred million dollar plus run rate, um, I think we really are the right company to, to make promises and deliver on them. And, and we have a history and a track record of doing so. Um, given the, the amount of time we have, I think, you know, we'll skip over a few things, but, um, you know, we've put together an amazing team of, of, um, of people with, with wide breadth and depth of experience in their various areas. Vince Canalis is here tonight, our head of security. Uh, Vince is the head of the fraternal order of police in Maryland and sits on the national board. And so all of our security, whether it's grow processing or, uh, retail is done by retired police local to the community. Um, you know, James Khan's here tonight, who's our national director of outreach and, and James is a rabbi and, um, and spent many years helping people, um, on their deathbed, you know, cope with, with end of life. And, and so, um, we've been able to build this company and, and, you know, while a lot of our national competitors are, uh, financial engineers, um, you know, we've built a team of, of true advocates that are really, really dedicated, to being hyper-local and to the communities that we serve. And so, you know, I'm really proud to, to be here. I think, um, I think Northfield is an amazing place. We've got, spent a lot of time there. Um, and I think we can be a great addition to the town and, and, uh, with that, I'll, I'll kick it back to Nate.
Hey, thanks, Josh. Um, so I rushed through the intro a little because I wanted to make sure we had time to, um, cover this development proposal that was in your packets. Um, I think it's really interesting and innovative and I think it can do some, some amazing things in Northfield and, and create a long-term partnership. As previously mentioned and evidence through, uh, past actions, which I had hoped James was going to have some time to speak about, um, but unfortunately didn't tonight, but we have a long and successful history of working with communities on numerous types of projects. Uh, here in Northfield, uh, we've been responsive and, and worked cooperatively with your planning consultants to come up with a plan that enhances the accessibility and aesthetics of our site while accomplishing several major goals of the downtown strategic action plan through implementing one of the most significant, uh, public infrastructure components of that plan at the core intersection of Main and Barker. Our proposed development would contribute the necessary land for improvements along with up to four hundred thousand dollars to implement the synthesis plan through a public-private partnership with the township. This will enable us to work with Northfield as a key partner to improve the corner of Barker and Main and create an attractive boulevard with landscaping, wide walkways, thoughtful streetscapes, space for public art, uh, the ability to calm traffic along with additional on-street parking. Mostly we would create a visible transition and striking gateway into the downtown. Imagine coming down Barker, slowing down to meet the boulevard, three line streets, parallel parking on the right, public garden in the median, and then you, it empty, it opens up onto the lake in, in, to Main Street and, and the downtown. I mean, it'll be, it'll be striking and I think it'll really be a real catalyst for further development. As you're all aware, uh, Barker Road is currently constructed, is not wide enough to implement the infrastructure improvements called for in the synthesis plan. We look, uh, looking at the plan, I noticed there's a lot of infill and, uh, redevelopment. But our site, the family video actually remains the same. So by granting rights to what is now our furniture, we create enough space, uh, to build the boulevard with all the features highlighted in the plan. We're fortunate that, uh, although we only have control over R-one parcel, due to its amazing location, we are uniquely positioned to be able to unilaterally have a huge impact on transforming the downtown in conformance with the plan. Myself having a background in urban planning, I'm acutely aware of how difficult it is to undertake major infrastructure projects, especially involving private landowners. So this presents a really rare and amazing opportunity. I'm excited that we can make this project happen and to help ensure this gets done, we have reallocated, uh, funds to dedicate to design development and then another phase of matching funds to go towards the build itself. The specific structure and, and schedule of the, the current proposal is, is meant to be flexible right now. Um, our intention is to work with the township around the suggested parameters to find the arrangement that works best for all parties, at which time we would enter into a formal agreement. I feel incorporating the public improvements into our existing plan, uh, in addition to our previously discussed outreach clearly demonstrates our commitment to the township through being a responsive partner and a productive and proactive member of the downtown business in larger Whitmore community. This will be a transformative project for the township and one we are incredibly excited to undertake. It will be a boon for our business, a net increase in available public parking, create an attractive and inviting setting that will help both us and the community thrive. All these factors alongside our history in Northfield, extensive experience as local operators, our impeccable regulatory history of compliance at state and local levels, the quality of local jobs we create with benefits and opportunities for growth. In addition to the fact we have a proven track record of successfully completing outreach programs in Michigan and elsewhere, together, you put all these together and, and it really points to our fortunate position of having the resources and the expertise to bring, uh, a successful business and successfully implement the synthesis plan within the township. Additionally, it shows the overall ability to best comply with the state act within the township, uh, from an operational perspective. Uh, we look forward to having the chance to do so and, and to partner with the township in the future.
Uh, thank you, Nate.
Well, um, can I just jump in real quickly? This is Steve SD counsel for, uh, for GS Ashley.
Yes, sir.
I, I just wanted to let the commission know that, that we did prepare, uh, today and provided Paul with a, with a draft, uh, proposed findings uh, in response to his letter. As you know, his letter recommends, uh, the planning commission approve our conditional use, uh, subject to the, the conditions three through five. And, um, to, to help the commission if it wants, we have prepared a, a sheet that we think highlights uh, how we have met all those criteria, um, in, in, uh, in response and to assist, uh, with Mr. Lippens', uh, review letter. So, um, I just wanted to note that for the record so that you guys could have that if you need it. I think he can provide it to you and if it's not necessary, he can just, um, put it into the record and, and leave it there. But I wanted to, uh, let everybody know that we took the time to do that today to help out the convention.
Thank you, Stephen. I appreciate it. And, and yes, I was going to mention that, um. So depending on chair, depending on how the conversation goes, um, I do have an additional memorandum, uh, from, uh, GS Ashley, uh, related to the findings, uh, their interpretations of findings that I requested either planning commission or the board make. Um, I don't know if you're going to want those this evening. I could certainly read them into the record. Um, but, uh, perhaps even before, um, I asked the chair for an opinion on that, I, I, I would remind, um, planning commission, uh, that at our past discussions, um, it was suggested that you would want to make, um, have to make the decision possibly at the meeting after you've heard all of the cases. Um, so I did prepare my memorandums with, with recommendations to approve. Um, but I'm actually verbally recommending you table this evening until after you've heard the cases as you've previously indicated to me you wanted to do. Um, and if that is still the case, um, I think that GS Ashley's memorandum could be provided in a, a future, uh, memo, so you have time to read it. Um, if you do think that the discussion tonight is leading towards you make a recommendation, I would suggest that, um, that we read that, uh, memo into the record or possibly, uh, just sh- share it, uh, ver- ver- by a screen share and then the public could see it as well. Um, but, uh, it was submitted, I think they've, you know, obviously got the packet when everyone else got the packet and had forty-eight hours or so to turn it around and, um, did provide us with a memo that I think, uh, could be helpful for planning commission to read.
Uh, Mr. Lippens, um, I don't think, I don't feel tonight it needs to be added into the record for us. Um, and just so the rest of the commissioners, uh, understand, uh, just like you described, I believe our aim tonight was to do the reviews of the conditional uses in the site plans and to table recommendations until we've heard the balance of the applicants. And I also, uh, believe it was the commission's, uh, direction to, uh, leave the scoring system and, uh, to the board of trustees for, for them to make their decision. We were going to forward our recommendation all at one time, which will not be tonight. So we will be tabling these items, but we will do this, do the discussions. I would like to table these until the next group of applicants are done, then we'll forward all at one time. Um, if, if there's any commissioners that feel differently, um, please chime in now. Uh, Ms. Chick.
No, I agree. Uh, that's been the plan all along. I think we should stick to the plan in regards, uh, to the memo from Mr. Etsy. I think that, um, you can include that in the next, uh, bit of information that we get and, and it'll go to the board as well too. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dwyer.
Oh, heartily agree. It's the only way to do it.
Yep.
Thank you. Mr. Zarzaki.
Absolutely agree.
Thank you, Ms. Infante.
Yes, I also agree. That was what we had, uh, discussed and had up all agreed on. To wait till it was all, all six of them were ready.
Are you good with that, Mr. Kuzno? Very good. And, and it's good that we pointed out now so that all the applicants have the, the understanding also. So at this point, um, I would like to move on, Mr. Lippens, to, to do your, uh, report regarding the conditional use.
Yes, so, um, you'll, you'll see a trend in the three cases that we have on the agenda tonight with respect to my conditional use review. Um, and let me focus on GS Ashley because this is their case. Um, but, um, one of the things I've asked for, uh, in my recommendation is that planning commission, uh, or the board make specific findings with their, uh, recommendation to approve. And my advice is that those findings be related to the condition, conditional use standards. And if there are specific elements of either the, um, marijuana facility voluntary local development agreement or the supplemental scoring evaluation, uh, that stood out or other parts of the site plan application, uh, other things you've heard in the applicant's seminals that stand out, I'm going to advise that they're related back to the conditional use standards and then presented as findings. The reason why I've presented this is because, um, we do have, uh, multiple people, as you know, that have applied for, um, citing their facilities and there are a limited number of marijuana facility licenses. Um, so what we want, uh, planning commission, the board to do is to make sure that the decision of who to approve is, um, supported by findings about the review of those, um, those proposals. Um, additionally, um, I've added another, uh, recommendation to, um, to my, uh, recommendation and that is if the, if GS Ashley is not, um, one of the applications that is recommended for approval of conditional use, uh, my recommendation would be to, uh, table action. So assuming that, uh, planning commission does make a recommendation to the board to approve, then, uh, if the board does not concur with that recommendation, I would recommend that they table as opposed to deny, uh, which would give staff, uh, the opportunity to then, uh, work with the tabled applicants to see if there's another way to move forward with their use. Um, essentially, I think, um, you know, certainly, uh, with GS Ashley, you have an applicant that has proved, um, their ability, uh, to perform and willingness to partner to improve the, the township. Um, so that's kind of generally about how I've recommended, uh, we structure any, um, recommendation to approve the conditional use. You will find in reviewing, uh, the standards in the letter, uh, that I do find that, um, they've been met. I think the two, um, um, outstanding kind of issues, uh, that really are subjective. Uh, one would be, uh, the consideration of public comments. Um, I've seen many letters of support, uh, for, for GS Ashley. Um, and I don't recall any specific concerns, uh, that were expressed during the public hearing we held a month ago. Um, although we do have minutes and that's something we could discuss as part of the discussion. If planning commission heard anything, uh, concerns, uh, mentioned by the public about this particular site. Um, so that is, uh, one of the kind of more subjective, uh, elements, um, to be discussed. And, uh, the, the second thing, I think Nate spent some time presenting their approach to implementing the downtown synthesis plan. Um, I think because there are multiple master plans really, uh, one of the township master plan, which covers the general, uh, vision for downtown as part of the village center district. Um, there's also the more specifics, uh, plan for downtown, which is the downtown strategic action plan, which includes a syn- synthesis plan for downtown, which Nate showed some images, uh, with their plan laid over that downtown synthesis plan in his presentation. Um, and then additionally, uh, at play for the GS Ashley site is also the north village plan, uh, which shows, uh, opportunities to make connections and provide additional parking for downtown as well. So those physical plans, um, I think are on top of the general future land use plan. And it will be part of, uh, planning commission's review of, um, the proposals in the downtown to also understand how well they've done at addressing, uh, those specific, uh, physical plans for downtown. Um, now certainly we wouldn't make the case that the, uh, synthesis plans are intended to be implemented exactly as drawn, uh, their concepts. Um, they are concepts that were drawn, uh, in, and involve, uh, a public process, uh, some collaboration and through workshops. Um, but that being said, I think they represent, um, kind of the, the best possible future vision for, for downtown. Uh, really, uh, what we want to create is, is a place. Really, what we want to create is a place, a place that has, you know, memory, a place that people remember as being, you know, beautiful, that where the lake access is highlighted. And I think the vision for the Boulevard that's expressed in the downtown plan achieves, you know, many of the things that peer communities in Northfield have in them. I think in my letter, I said that a private-public partnership is probably the only way to achieve this. And I think that it's definitely true. I think Nate covered that in his presentation, too. You know, we need to have landowners that share the vision, that realize they benefit from working to implement that vision. And then in G S Ashley, you have someone who also has kind of taken that to propose a development agreement as well. So Chair, I see you.
Yes.
Make a point. Yes, sir.
I don't mean to interrupt you, but I hope to keep the conditional use review to the nuts and bolts of the document. I think a lot of the topics you're getting into would tend to be more discussion items for the Board of Trustees upon their decision of scoring and so forth. So I would just, I would like to concentrate on the actual review items that are listed and will continue that way for each applicant, if we could, Mr. Lippens.
Fair enough. I'll wrap it and I'll wrap it up just to say that I think the way they've proposed to both enter into a development agreement with the township, but also have a site plan that is in substantive conformance with the zoning ordinance, you know, shows that they've done their due diligence and in considering the vision of the township. So I think I've covered both the, my, how my recommendation is structured. Certainly, taking the time to tell Planning Commission that I think tonight the recommendation would be to table. But you've heard from myself and the applicant on the conditional use, and you can ask questions on this or moved on to the site plan. And I'm seeing Nate as one comment, Chair, if you'll allow.
Yeah, just briefly, as a matter of creating this place, you know, we went through it and we did budget enough that we thought we can really get this done. The first, with $400,000 total, $200,000 for design development, and then the other two in matching funds for the build. And then we could move some money from design development over to the build. But to be clear, I looked at this with my civil engineer and combined this should be enough to get a significant chunk of this design built and really functional for the township. So we're really excited about it. I just wanted to include that.
Thank you, Mr. Pedred. At this point, we'll go to discussion by the Commission regarding the conditional use report from Mr. Lippens. I know Mr. Dwyer had his hand up a couple of times. We'll start with him.
No, it was, I think I'll hold it to the end so we don't get sidetracked. Thank you.
Okay, any other Commissioners have questions, comments regarding the conditional use on this case? Ms. Chick?
I don't have any questions. I think Mr. Lippens and Mr. Pedred and his staff explained everything pretty well. It was a great presentation, by the way, and appreciate all the work that went into it. I do have, I see on the screen here, yeah, there's two questions from people in the question and answer menu at the bottom of the screen. Are we answering those at this time or no? Okay.
Ms. Chick, it's not a question-answer type forum. We're going, as we've always done on the Planning Commission, during the Commission's review on a case, it'll be from the Commissioners and we can ask questions of the Planning Consultant. We can ask questions of the applicant or their representative, and it's strictly discussion in that matter.
Okay, so I would like clarification then from the Planning Consultant, Mr. Lippens. Under, actually, the comments that you made under additional conditions, it says, "We recommend that at least three findings about the proposal be cited to support this condition." And you indicated that it could either come from the Planning Commission or from the Board. Is that correct? Okay, and so what type of findings are you looking for? Just comments on the proposal or?
I would say that they, I'm looking for findings related to the conditional use criteria that specifically talk about the plan, the proposal of the plan, and why it's a proposal that is worthy of approval. And, you know, specifically with respect to the four, so we have four, and if you've reviewed my scoring memorandum, which I've been updating based on how individual applicants' proposals develop and really working to understand what the applicants are proposing and what their qualifications are. We do have four applications now that essentially have a tie with a marijuana facility voluntary local development agreement of six and a supplemental scoring evaluation 19. But a tie isn't necessarily a tie because we know that they're indicators of an overall proposal. For instance, we asked, one of the things that you're reviewing or that we, that was a threshold criteria in the scoring evaluation was experience in the cannabis industry or business experience. Well, you know, as we all know, you can have the requisite experience, but that doesn't mean it's the same experience. So you might be more impressed by one candidate's experience in the cannabis industry than another's. Those are the types of things that I think you need to cite to support it. And in addition, you know, there are applications, three applications in downtown that are within 1,000 feet of each other. Well, based on the township's zoning criteria, only one of those can be approved. So we are asking for, you know, additional, an additional finding about, you know, why one of those would be supported over one of the others. And with respect to the overall approval of conditional use, it would be my recommendation that the Board does not approve more conditional use applications than permits that were created. And rather than denying the other applicants that we have, I would recommend that if they do take action to approve some, they table the others, which will allow us to circle back with those applicants and work through what their preferences might be if there's a way that we could still work with them. You know, as everybody knows, a lot's changed since we started down this process and we've got a lot to consider, so.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Lippens. So again, I guess I'll put it this way. Tonight, the Planning Commission is looking at the case as it relates to the ordinance, it meeting the requirements to be a conditional use. So let's keep it to that if we can, because if we talk about all of the other criteria, it's, for one, the Board is the one that ultimately is going to make the decision. And for two, it's not wise use of our time to see the rest of these cases. So if we can keep on track with that. Any other Commissioners have questions, comments regarding the conditional use? Seeing none, I do. Mr. Lippens, I have some questions. So I reviewed the conditional use for G S Ashley. I know that on their terminology, on the agenda and on their reviews, it says adult use and provisioning center. We're, I believe there's an inconsistency on the reports and the agenda, the reports from McKenna regarding the proper terminology, I think, is where we're at. Can you tell me where adult use is in the current ordinance? And I know ordinance 36-340 is the permitted uses, which also lists the conditional uses. It's not in there, but the marijuana is in addition to that. I have an old hard copy on the Muni code. There's a reference to the new marijuana ordinance. So if we go to that, I'm looking at terminology in definitions. We do not have a definition of adult use. Am I correct?
I'm, I believe that you are correct. Adult use and retail or recreational use are synonyms.
I guess my point is, I would like to stick with the defined terms of the ordinance. We have retailer means a person licensed to obtain marijuana from marijuana establishments and to sell or otherwise transfer marijuana to marijuana establishments and to individuals who are 21 years of age or older. And we have a definition for provisioning center means a licensee that is a commercial entity located in the state that purchases marijuana from a grower, processor and sells supplies or provides to registered qualifying patients directly or includes any commercial property where marijuana is sold at retail to registered qualifying patients or registered primary caregivers. So I guess I would like it clarified that the applicant is indeed applying to be a retailer, not anything else other than a retailer or a provisional, provisioning center.
You are correct. They are not, they are applying for a retailer and a provisioning center as defined by our ordinance.
Okay, if that could be corrected somehow on the reviews, and I think it's consistent with the other two applicants tonight also, but I'll touch upon that when we get there. The reason is, I also looked up adult use, you know, adult use in our regular ordinance. There are adult-themed uses, none of which are adult uses or adult use per se, adult use. Exactly. So I just wanted to make that clear and on the record.
Your point is well-taken. I'll be careful to use the terms as we define them in our ordinance. You know, for the industry, after we wrote our ordinance, the term adult use became more prevalent.
That's fine. If we'd like to add that definition to the ordinance, we can more than look at that, but at this time, we don't have that. So I would like to stay with the defined terms. I think it's safer to do it that way. So perhaps marijuana retail and provisioning, provisioning sales or provisioning be provisioning center, one of those two terms. The other question I have is is there also a definition of provisioning center, Mr. Lippens? As I said, we have provisioning center. Okay, I answered my own question. So the one, the one example I did read is the provisioning center. So other than that, I just wanted to make that point so that's on the record and we can apply that to the additional applicants. But I don't know what you want to do as far as your current reviews. Mr. Lippens?
I would just like to clarify on the record that the, an adult use is a synonym for retailer. And in future, future letters, I'll make sure to use the definition of the ordinance, but we've clarified it and it should be resolved.
Any, any other Commissioners have comments, questions?
Can I pipe in really quickly?
Ms. Infante?
I like the distinction, even though I understand that adult use is a synonym, because I do know that in terms of public comments that we've heard, there was a lot of concern from people about what exactly would be happening inside of these establishments, like a big smoke down. And obviously, that is not at all the case, but I think the term adult use might have suggested that, the use issue. So having it be a retailer and provisioning center is more accurate to what these businesses are are doing. So I like the distinction. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to table recommendation on case JPC 200002 on the conditional use until immediately following the recommendations for the remaining applicants for their conditional use and site plan approvals.
Part?
Who supported, I'm sorry? Mr. Kuzno, support? Any questions, comments on a motion? Seeing none, we'll go to roll call vote. Mr. Zarzaki?
Ms. Chick?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzno?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Ms. Infante?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Zarzaki, yes. Six passes.
Thank you. We will move on to B, which is the same case, JPC 200002. G S Ashley at 22 Barker, 9615 Main. This is to recommend and approve, approve of conditions or deny site plan approval to develop the existing structure into, again, adult use provisioning center. Adult use provisioning centers are permitted conditional land use in that district. Parcel numbers, B-02-05-253-005, Zone WLDD, with more like downtown district. Mr. Lippens? Oh, thank you. Support or favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Okay, Mr. Lippens, we'll go to your, to your review.
Yes, so you have in your packet both a review letter from myself as well as from O H M on the site proposal, and I believe you have a letter from FIRE as well. We have reviewed the proposal. It includes a number of amenities. Bike parking, benches, additional landscaping, as well as architectural improvements to the building. I think you have a pretty nice site design, real refresher to a building downtown. And, you know, we have a recommendation tonight to approve. Would like to hear from Marcus on his comments. Again, our recommendation to approve is contingent on the applicant receiving water pool for the conditional use for what I said was adult use retailer. We'd call that a marijuana retailer in the ordinance and provisioning. So I have noticed, noted that since my recommendation to approve is contingent on their receiving a conditional use, if the Board does not grant that conditional use or chooses to table it, another thing that we could work with the applicant to do would be to find a suitable use for this site that would support the kind of redevelopment that's been proposed here. The other thing I would like to kind of state is somewhat related back to the discussion we had on the conditional use. The idea for partnering on a Phase Two development to implement the Boulevard would be a separate application or pursued separately to the approval of the site plan. So the site plan you have in the packet tonight is the site plan that we are recommending approval. The site plan that we are recommending approval. We did. We do have the township's. Attorney Mariah Fink on the phone tonight too. Who was a party to our meetings with the applicant. What we would do related to that phase two proposal would be to work. On a development agreement as part of the conditional use application. So, you know. If you see that idea of creating a Boulevard, that's going to be a pretty big project that's going to involve a lot of partners. But I think it's it's good to have, you know, the two key partners at the table, which is the landowner and one of the key landowners in the township. So just to clarify again. Even with that proposal for a phase two development agreement. The the site plan that's being approved is the site or that we're recommending approval is the site plan that appears in the packet. And I don't know if Marcus has comments on his review or there he is, Marcus.
Yeah, we will go to the report by OHM.
Good evening, Commissioner. Thank you Chair. Really only a couple of quick things I wanted to point out from engineering perspective. You know, it's an existing site. The improvements they're proposing actually reduce the impervious surface. They have some stormwater improvements that they're proposing, which are good things. There's currently two curb cut drive. And they're closing one of those, the one closer to the intersection. Which is also a good thing. That helps with safety. So really, the only comment I guess that we had out there was that all the work that's within the. Both road right of ways and at the intersection would be subject to review and approval from Washington County. And the applicant's engineer has acknowledged that they know that that's a step they need to take, so. From an engineering perspective, we don't have any further comments on the site plan.
Thank you, Mr. McNamara. And I also want to say that we received the township fire department review and there's no issues there. Would any commissioners like to discuss comments, questions regarding the site plan? Mr. Dwyer.
A couple of questions. Firstly, sort of an incidental question, where is your Ann Arbor facility located? What's the crossroads or address?
Three, three, eight Ashley Road by down from Fleetwood.
Oh, right by Fleetwood. Oh, good location. Right by Fleetwood.
Yeah.
How many employees would typically be in this store?
Tough to say, probably. Four to six maybe. It could be as low as, yeah, somewhere in that range, I'd say.
All right, so four to six employees and you got five parking spaces. Where are we anticipating? Customers more than five park and a four to six employees park. Parking is at a premium down there.
Well, you know, there's some space at seventy-five Barker from what I've been told. And so that would probably be the ideal spot, although there is street parking and then obviously for what we're trying to build, we would be adding a ton of street parking with the Boulevard. Public on-street parking that would be available.
Well, the Boulevard parking isn't available at present, right? It wouldn't be part of this conditional.
Fair enough. There is some other street parking, I believe along Maine, but also seventy-five Barker and and those that's what would have to be used probably at this time.
So not very good. In other words, we're not providing sufficient parking for employees and customers on premises.
Well, unfortunately, there was an issue with the pervious surface. In order to hit that mark, we had to take out a few parking spots. And you know, the ordinance didn't allow us to get a variance, so we couldn't stay with the design we had. So unfortunately, we lost three spots, I believe, through that process.
Also, if I may. Given the fact that we're committed to hiring locally within the township, we we in other locations have. Have created a shuttle service for employees and for for customers. So that's absolutely an option too.
Wow. What about Marcus chime in here? What about putting parallel parking on Main Street along that frontage whereby you. Do an indent parking much as the rest of Main Street has and create half dozen spaces there.
I'm just looking at the aerial there. That may be.
You know what I mean? You leave the corner, you put you move, take ten foot of frontage and create five spaces. If you look along Main Street, we've got indent parking all the way along there in many spaces, many areas, and that would create some parking for them.
Yeah, you would be. I'd have to look at that closer to see how many you could actually fit it there because you are limited on how close to the intersection you can be.
Right.
By the road commission. But that that's something that could be looked at and ultimately, I'm not even sure I guess the applicant could maybe tell us if they've even submitted. Grant plans to the county yet or not, unless I talked to the engineer, they had not.
Yeah, we have the documentation filled out, but we haven't.
That would be something if that's something the planning commissioner wanted them to consider evaluate, they could do that prior to their submission to the road commission.
I mean, my opinion here is the whole point of this business is to spur other businesses, which means more people. People coming cars, there's no public transport parking is going to become our ultimate problem. If we're successful in actually revitalizing downtown, parking is going to become a number one problem. So to have new businesses come in and not solve their own parking problem is just compounding. The problem if it is successful.
So so we're trying to kill multiple birds with one stone by. Creating a Boulevard which will bring people downtown and spur more growth and create more parking is the goal. And you know, ideally, we would start this plan where I mean, we're ready to start when you are essentially for that. So yes, I mean, the goal is to bring people down and you know, from the plans in your downtown strategic action plan, we would be. Facilitating more people parking. Currently, your ordinance does not require any parking on our site, to be clear from my understanding. So we're trying, you know, to preserve what we can and then we want to add this to spur growth and bring more parking in. And then if other landowners can can participate in the plan, there there would be potentially more parking opened up.
There's a lot of base.
I know Commissioner Dwyer, I know that it's like trustee Chick had her hand up as well, and I think it was related to your comment, so. Just wanted to give her an opportunity to speak as well.
Yep, there is public parking right across the street at seventy-five Barker and even with the sale of the building, the we are designating. A certain amount of that parking lot and initially I think we're going to be adding more to that parking lot for public. But currently there are, I think about twelve spaces available at least over there. That nobody uses.
Yeah, through the chair. I don't know, Commissioner Dwyer, did you have another comment? I did have a also a comment to make on on parking, but I want to go back to you first.
No, I think it's just a general comment that, you know. If this is successful, we revitalize downtown and we have twelve spaces, we don't want them all eaten up by the first business in. And everyone else that is supposedly going to piggyback on this revitalization is nowhere to park, so. It's more important as much as possible for businesses to take care of their own parks as best they can. And I understand that their onsite parking is limited, but if there's a way to create parking along Main Street, same way as. We have done on other parts of Main Street, then that would be beneficial, I think.
Thank you, Commissioner Dwyer. Through the chair, I did have a comment on this, may.
Go ahead, Mr. Lippens, and I see Mr. Kuzno would be next.
Great, thank you. On the on the parking issue, I like everything I've heard. I will note kind of one of those. The, you know, very true stories about owning a business in a small town is you've always got the one business owner who goes and parks right in front of their store. And then they are customers can't park there, right? So the idea that someone starting a business downtown would reserve the parking on their site for customers. And possibly even shuttle employees in is is a really good idea, right? And then I think Commissioner Dwyer, I just also wanted to comment that your observations about creating parking on Main Street. Are exactly what we're talking about with the plan. So talking about creating that Boulevard. Even if, you know, we will need to partner with Washington County to get that done and. Whether or not it was like as Marcus was saying, something they approached, can we do a few parallel spaces as part of this? I think it is something to look at in the future. For now, from a parking perspective. I think that having a little bit of green space on that site and maintaining five spaces seems like a pretty decent improvement. On what's currently there, even though we're sacrificing a little parking. We don't want all of downtown to be dedicated towards parking. We need to have those shared resources and the township has been working on that as well, so. That was my perspective on it and I do think that the part of the opportunity to create those shared resource. Is is the right of way and that's what's shown in the downtown synthesis plan is creating more opportunity in the right of way to park. Wow.
Mr. Kuzno.
So Paul, can you verify what the the petitioner said, no parking is required onsite per ordinance? Is that true or not?
Yes, I don't believe there is a parking requirement in downtown. Many have used retail parking as approximate for figuring out how much parking they would want in downtown. But we do not have a on-street or onsite parking requirement in the downtown area.
Okay, and and maybe I didn't read the full review. Why did we eliminate the five parking spaces that were eliminated at the corner over here?
I I believe it was related to trying to create more impervious surface on the site and deal with stormwater issues, although that could be something for Marcus to answer.
Yeah, I can. Well, I can see that the applicant is proposing to reduce impervious. Surface, although we didn't direct them on how much or where to do that, so I don't know if they could maybe shed some more light on how they made the decisions they made. Yeah, and I mean, in order, because it's because we're on the corner that the the ratio is a bit higher for pervious to impervious. And there really is no other space to kind of get it in with being able to have proper turnarounds and maneuvering lanes in the parking lot. The the lot isn't very wide on the west side of the building, so there's not much we can do there and it's it's right up almost against the building on the back. So the only place was really to dig into the existing parking, unfortunately.
And are we still at least? Is that per our ordinance that we made those changes or was that through Washington County resource, water resources or what?
I believe it's your ordinance, Marcus. I know you reviewed that, correct? Well, the township defers to the county.
Okay.
Drain standards for rules, so that they'd be the same. But again, an existing site that an existing site typically. As long as you're not increasing impervious surface and not changing the drainage patterns, isn't necessarily required to fully meet the current ordinance. So again, this, we didn't ask for. The 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 design as I as I have it in front of me was presented, you know, by your engineer and we didn't direct them on how much impervious to reduce. Yeah, I think he was just trying to hit the number without us needing a variance or a waiver, which we aren't allowed to get per the ordinance.
Okay, so one more thing. So are you are you proposing any changes to the footprint of the building?
No.
Okay, so that to me is all those things add up to. It doesn't make any sense. You had to do anything with the the parking area or the or the. If it's an existing building, existing site, you're not proposing any changes to any of those things. It seems to me that. Additional effort should not be required to. I mean, it just just doesn't make any sense to me, so I'm just curious how that came about.
I mean, unfortunately, our civil engineer is happens to be on vacation this week, but it was his. Calculations and his review of the code that we needed to increase. The impervious surface due to being on the corner lot and I think it's written up in the in the engineering letter, maybe. If we didn't want to ask for a waiver or variance.
Yeah, okay, got it. Would you be upset to not have to do that?
I I mean, no, we'll take the parking, but I mean, ultimately, we're trying to build a Boulevard anyway, which is going to take this all away, so I assume if we come in, I mean. We we can do it at this point, but I think, you know, we're. We're really trying to move this forward in a different direction anyway, so. You know, that would be kind of, I guess, up to planning to decide how to best approach sort of those two issues together.
I believe Mr. Zarzaki has comment.
Yes, this issue of pervious impervious. Could easily be addressed by using the pervious type pavements. Very similar to what we just did with the the community center. Where they didn't have the room to put in a retainment or potential retention pond, so we went with a permeable type pavement. And it's working. It works in Ann Arbor all over the place. It works everywhere. It's just a matter of taking out the pervious. Impervious surfacing and putting down asphalt service that's pervious and allows the water to travel through it. So that's an option that they can, you know, look at whether we go one way or the other as far as the Boulevard.
I mean, that's that fair enough. We can do and we could look into parallel street parking even as a short-term solution while working. We can, I mean, we're open to all these. We've used. Pervious parking to solve similar problems in other situations and and we would be okay with exploring that option here. Again, I would love to pursue the Boulevard first and foremost, but if that's a stopgap measure to get us there, then we'd have no problem doing it.
Mr. Lippens, you had comment?
I did. I just, I think that the the point that might be being missed a little bit here about why the applicant. Proposed this solution in their site plan is because they were anticipating that because we have. Washington County Drain Commission requirements that they would try to meet it and even if. Because they're not modifying the footprint of the business or expanding the. Impervious area, the Drain Commission would require them to do that. It doesn't mean that improving the stormwater processing isn't a good thing. So I I think that it's important to remember that, you know, having a little more green space, having place for a bench, having a place for. Some some landscaping on that site. Is are all good things to be included in the proposal and. Again, even though I know parking is important, it's not the only thing we want downtown. So I certainly appreciate, well, you know, I would like to see a partnership work out to look at ways to implement. A Boulevard or some other improvements. I think that this site plan, you know, does recognize somewhat of the character that we're looking for in downtown in having. Some improvement on that corner there.
I just said, we were guided by the existing code in the application which brought us to this configuration, but if something else is preferable, I mean, we can work with the township. To make sure you guys are happy, but we, you know, this design was based on sort of the information that we got from the township.
Mr. Roman, may I make a quick comment?
Yes.
Regarding regarding that point about the design being based on the information that you receive from the township. That Boulevard is part of the connectivity framework that is in our downtown strategic action plan. And we, you know. I I see this as advancing that element of the plan that I assume is still integral to the larger. Design of the township incorporating North Village. So I I appreciated that and I did not see it as something that was specific to this particular business, but rather integrated. Into the the character that we hope to continue developing and proving in our township, so. Again, downtown strategic plan was approved three years ago, so that's just my comment.
Thank you. Anyone else? So basically, although parking is a premium downtown. So ba- basically, although parking is a premium downtown, the applicant is within the requirements of the, of the ordinance. Correct, Mr. Lippens and Mr. McNamara with what they've proposed?
Correct.
Very good. I do, I heard through discussion, there, there will be no additions added to the existing structures, is that correct? Anyone from the applicant, is it Mr. Pedrid?
Yeah.
That's correct, there will be no additions. I have a question on your plans, page A dash three zero one.
Can I get a, can you let Joe Alter from Design Team Plus on? She's a, the, the civil engineer is out of town, but she, she can help with all that.
Just a question on the elevation, if anyone's able to answer it.
I, I don't have it in front of me, so I don't.
I'm gonna let Joe in. Joe, you should be able to speak now.
Yes, I'm here, thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Yes, my, my question is on page A three oh one of the submitted plans. On the north elevation, it does not show the, there's an existing stairway to the structure that's currently there, am I correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, so is it being removed? If it is not, why is it not provided? And if it is going to be maintained or still remain, how are you going to address the exterior? Can someone answer that?
In this proposal, it is removed from the exterior and it is put on the interior of the building. So there is no exterior staircase.
Very good, I just wanted to verify that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else have questions, comments on the site plan? Ms. Chick?
I have a question, not regarding, well, I don't know if it's regarding the site plan or not, but Nate, are you purchasing the entire building and will there still be renters in there?
No, they're already gone, to my knowledge, and there would not be back in, no.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, I make a motion to table the recommendation on case JPC two zero 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 two, the site plan until immediately following the recommendations for the remaining applicants for conditional use and site plan approvals. Or? Supported by Mr. Zarzaki, any questions, comments on that motion? Seeing none, we'll do roll call vote, Mr. Zarzaki.
Ms. Chick?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzno?
Yes.
Mr. Dryer?
Yes.
Ms. Afante?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Zarzaki, yes, six approved.
Thank you, everyone, from the GS Ashley applicant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and kind of make the GS Ashley team attendees again. And find our, our next applicants here from the Green, Green Guys group.
Matt Ritz?
Yeah, let me get, there's a lot of do, so I don't, I'm trying not to remove people from the meeting, but if I remove them from the panel, I'm gonna try that. If, if anyone gets removed from the meeting, please rejoin, I'm sorry, but I want to clean up my panel here. All right, I think I have my panelists. Who's this? James Khan, or I'm gonna remove James Khan. Remove. Remove. Hmm. Okay, Matt Ritz, I'm gonna promote Matt Ritz to a panelist. Matt, let's see. Matt, are you there? Matt, okay, Matt, we got, I'm looking for the rest of your team here. There's Travis has his hand raised, I'm gonna promote Travis. Um, who else is on the team here, Matt?
Mike Lewis.
All right.
And Kevin. And Michael Larry.
Michael Leary. Okay, I think I have everyone.
Hey, we're ready to move on, Mr. Lippens. We're good, Mr. Lippens?
Yes, we are.
Thank you. New business C is, I make motion to open a discussion for case JPC two zero 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 five to recommend to approve, approve of conditions or deny the request of Green Guys Group nine five four five through nine five five one Main Street, Whitmore Lake for conditional use to develop the existing structure into a retail and provisioning center. Retail and provisioning centers are permitted as conditional land use in WLDD District per Article twelve, section thirty-six dash three four zero of the zoning ordinance. Parcel numbers B dash zero two dash zero five dash two five four dash zero two three in zone WLDD Whitmore Lake Downtown District. Thank you. On, anyone else, or excuse me, all in favor indicate by saying aye. I propose. I just have it. Once again, Mr. Lippens, we go to the representative of Green Guys Group. We will allow roughly ten minutes. They can speak regarding their conditional use and their site plan. And then we will address items separately going to your reports, just so that the applicants understand.
All right, Matt.
It's you, Mr. Lippens.
Well, I'm actually, I'm actually gonna speak and then open it up to the rest of the team, if that's okay.
Great, thank you, Michael.
All right, thanks. Well, good evening, Northfield Planning Commission and residents. I'm Michael Lewis and actually sitting here with Matthew Ritz as well. And on behalf of Treehouse Wellness, we want to thank you for the continued opportunity to review our proposed plans. We spent the last week volunteering our time with the township, constructing the new playground and walkways and continuing the sound public community involvement that we've had thus far. With respect to everyone's time this evening, we would like to focus the allotted time on showcasing our site plans and address any questions there may be. And at this point, I also would like to transfer this over to Travis.
Thanks, Mike, everybody hear me okay? Good, awesome, yeah, like Mike said, you know, we as a group feel we, we made a presentation in the public hearing. It was important for us for, to give the public as well as the planning commission an opportunity to ask us questions. So in that same vein, we're gonna try to reserve most of our time to field to you guys for questions. There's just something that we wanted to kind of put, kind of some perspective on as we are kind of having one final opportunity to speak with you all before we shift over to the board, hopefully. And that's not only the, the application that we've submitted, but the timeline of events that have happened afterwards. You know, it was very important to us that we respect the township's process, the, throughout this entire procedure. One of those parts of the process was an application window. If you recall, if you look at the, the actual FAQ for the application procedures, there was a deadline to put an application in by January twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty. Obviously, a lot has happened in the world since January. And I'd like to kind of just put into perspective some of the follow-up our application has had in context with not only procedures that you created before, but the way the world's changed since then. You know, after January twenty-fourth, we only really had one point-specific item that we clarified with the community. It wasn't a submission of new information, it was clarification on one of the items that we corrected. The type of information that we wanted to supplement our application with wasn't point motivated, it was community motivated. My clients have been working on reaching out to the community, they had public, public events where people were invited to speak and meet with them, so we could hear their concerns. And the owners of this company have been spending a significant amount of time trying to meet the business owners and residents of the community. And I'd like the township, as we shift into the decision-making phase of this process, to look at what steps the applicants have taken and what dates those steps were taken when you consider not just the points that are on this application, but how those points were obtained. An important point to note, at least for us, is there was a procedure established before these applications were set up that any applications arriving after four thirty PM, January twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty would be processed after the applications that were in by that deadline. We would like to just note for the record when our application was signed and submitted. But other than that, I would like to highlight and end with the fact that my client group has been holding meetings. We've been trying to get creative about ways that we can not only adapt to a COVID world, but also think about how a business like this would improve your community. I don't know if Mike O'Leary has anything, or we can save that for site plan questions, up to you guys. Thank you.
So I think, so I think we'd like to just open it up with the planning commission. If you guys have questions, you know, we're obviously opening a second business along with the marijuana establishment. We're offering an easement to connect Barker and Main Street. We really feel that, you know, our vision of Whitmore Lake coincides with the master plan for, for downtown and what everybody's looking for. So we've worked diligently with everybody, Paul and, and the group, and we've been trying to listen and we, we think our proposal stands for itself.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Ritz, it sounds like, thank you for being brief. Typically, what we do, so you know, is we will go to the planning consultant and hear his review.
Sure, sure, sure.
And then the planning commission will ask questions or have comments to either Mr. Lippens or, or yourselves, whoever can answer their questions, field their comments. So with that, Mr. Lippens, we'll go to your review.
Yes, so to keep this conversation to the conditional use application, I would point out that one of the unique elements of the Treehouse Wellness proposal is creating a public access and parking connection to seventy-five Barker. This site is really uniquely situated to provide circulation between Barker Road and Main Street, which is an essential part really of, of any downtown, is to have a parking area where not just you can go in and out, but you can circulate through to access businesses and go around. So I'm taking, I, I think this applicant took the initial step of really reviewing that plan, the downtown strategic action plan and proposing a solution that is a unique opportunity that they have to facilitate the implementation of shared parking in the downtown area. I think additionally, what stands out from a plan implementation point about this application is they also took time to read through the downtown strategic action plan and propose site elements that are consistent with the elements that were actually specked in that plan. So benches from Landscape Forums is a Michigan-based company that builds and designs street furnishings. You know, rebuilding or putting in some pavers along the front that would be consistent with the rest of the streetscape in downtown. And also facade improvements to dress up the front and make this, the business they're proposing really, really look good and be consistent with the vision for what the township wants to see in the downtown area. I certainly think, you know, the notes that Travis made about Treehouse Wellness's approach to the project and, you know, working to already do outreach to the community was indicated in somewhat from the public comments we received during their public hearing, which I do remember there was a number of very positive public comments about many of the groups, but I heard a lot of good things about Treehouse Wellness as well during that presentation. As I mentioned, for the benefit of the commission, we are recommending approval of the conditional use, but with the same conditions that I mentioned before. We would want those any recommendation to be supported by findings. Treehouse Wellness is one of the three applications that are in the downtown area currently with a tied marijuana facility, local development agreement and supplemental score. Also within a thousand feet of two other applications. So our recommendation would be tonight to table, but either to make specific findings with your approval or to essentially request that the board make those findings to support theirs, their approval. And rather than deny, we would recommend a tabling of any application to allow us to work with the applicants on next steps, should they not be one of the first approved. So I'll refrain on more comments, I think those are my comments related to the conditional use improvement, approval, and I'll refrain or hold more specific comments for the site plan.
Thank you, Mr. Lippens, any commissioners have comments, questions regarding the conditional use? Seeing none, I only have one. And it is the same as I pointed out in the first application, that I just want to go on record that in the reviews and on the agenda that we are referring to marijuana retailer and provisioning center rather than adult use and marijuana provisioning center. Agreed, Mr. Lippens?
Agreed, yes.
Thank you. No other comments, questions regarding the conditional use? Okay, then I will make a motion to table a recommendation on case JPC two zero 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 five on the conditional use until immediately following the recommendations for the remaining applicants for conditional use and site plan approvals.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Chick, any questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none, we'll go to roll call vote, Mr. Zarzaki.
Yes, Ms. Chick?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzno?
Yes.
Mr. Dryer?
Yes.
Ms. Afante?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Zarzaki, yes, six approved.
Thank you. And with that, I make a motion, open case, JPC two zero 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 five for discussion. Recommend to approve, approve of conditions or deny the request of Green Guys Group. Same address, nine five. Uh, same address nine five four five through nine five five one Main Street for a site plan approval to develop the existing structure into retail and provisioning center. Uh, those are permitted as conditional land uses in WLDD district per Article twelve, section thirty six dash three four zero, the zoning ordinance. Same parcel number is B dash two zero two dash zero five dash two five four dash zero two three. Zone WLDD district, that's Whitmore Lake Downtown District. Uh, okay, support, Mr. Zarzaki. All in favor to keep us in, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed. No one's opposed. Uh, with that, we'll go to Mr. Lippens, review the site plan, and then followed by Mr. McNamara.
Thank you, Chair. Um uh, we are recommending approval of uh the site plan uh with the condition that they uh, receive approval from the board on that conditional use application. Um, we would uh further recommend that um if they are not successful in it receiving that application, that um planning commission consider the site plan for another use that uh could be used at the site. Um, they, as I mentioned, are uh proposing to create a parking circulation and connection to the seventy five Barker site, uh, which would be a significant uh access and resource uh to creating that uh public parking facility in the downtown. Um, certainly uh aligns with the the board's efforts uh to um put seventy five Barker in the hands of someone who can also help develop that re- uh, that resource. Um The proposal, uh, you know, is for the reuse of a um you know, valuable Main Street type building, um, that really is essential to contributing to the character of the downtown uh, and having a facelift on a structure like this and um a viable use is uh really essential to long term health of uh the downtown area. Um So we have asked uh that as part of the um proposal, um that the the easement that's been described uh be uh a condition uh that we would, you know, permit to be administratively approved. Uh, the easement is on the site plan, um, but obviously it doesn't make sense to uh, develop that the language or record that easement until after uh the site is purchased and the approvals are granted. Um, so um, we're comfortable recommending that as a condition of approval. Um, and really see that as being a very valuable asset um to the township.
Thank you, Mr. Lippens. We'll go to Mr. McNamara.
Evening again. Uh, thank you. Um, so there isn't a lot here from engineering perspective. Paul talked about the cross access. Um, that is a very good thing, so that that'll need to um, be taken care of uh in the timeline, and he mentioned uh, the only other, I guess, comment that we had, well, two things, uh, with the uh reduced visibility because of the zero line building there, we had a concern about pedestrian and vehicle safety. Uh, we had made that um comment in our initial review, and they've uh addressed that to the extent possible. Uh, proposing mirrors uh at the buildings at the entrance there on Main. So that's a good thing. And then the last comment, Paul touched on it ear- earlier, uh, we're referring to um, them coordinating with the planner to make sure that the specific um, streetscape treatments are consistent with the rest of the downtown there as far as the pavers and tree grates, etc. Then noting again that that is um county right of way, so that will need to be permitted to wash. So we don't have any other uh comments that need to be addressed at this time.
Thank you, Mr. McNamara. And for the record, uh, we're in receipt of the fire department's review with no issues. Uh, with that, go to questions, comments from the commissioners regarding the site plan. Mr. Dwyer.
Uh, is this alleyway shared access for this business and the adjacent property?
You talking about the easement?
No, talking about the uh entrance off Main Street, the alleyway to get to the rear of the building where the parking is. Is that a shared access between uh this building and the adjacent building to the south?
Lovely monkey tattoo.
Yeah.
Yes, and we've already Dana, and uh she is on board with the easement as we uh presented a letter to Paul, signed by both parties. Um, you know, regarding the easement.
Okay, so the easement's at the rear, the connection to Barker, the proposed possible future connection to seventy five Barker, is that correct?
Yes, and Market Street and Barker as well, yes.
All right. So the problem I see here is the access is deplorable. You've got a a one in, one out access and egress through the alleyway. You have gas meters in the alleyway. And I'm not sure that pretty mirrors at the entrance is sufficient. I don't see how this works traffic flow wise without that connection to seventy five Barker in place.
I think uh our initial thoughts on that were to uh create a connection and then to continue to make it as big of a connection as we possibly can. Granted that we only control our site, we're currently working with as many neighbors as possible.
So then, you know, the neighbor at seventy five Barker, that's owned by the that property owner would have to expand that parking lot into the easement to connect to yours, correct? Because there's a green, there's a green buffer, right? Green, there's a green space right now buffering between the two parking lots, and someone's got to pay to connect those two together.
Yes, and so
Right.
We'd be willing to work with the township and uh make sure that that parking gets extended and, you know, the easement is granted, so they are connected.
So, well, easement is granted, but someone's got to do the work.
Yes, we've been going to work with the township, correct?
Okay, I don't see how that this plan works without that construction in place to connect those two together. I don't see how you get in and out safely. I don't see how you get in and out safely.
So, uh, Commissioner Dwyer, um, if I may, I'm gonna ask Marcus uh to comment, but I think if I understand your your comment, you're saying if uh if you don't have that connection, uh, and a vehicle were to pull in, how would they get out? Am I understanding you correct?
Well, um, I envision a a customer turning in and meeting a car coming out and stopping on Main Street. I envision someone coming out of the parking lot and crossing a sidewalk and not being able to see left or right until they're on the sidewalk. I envision two cars meeting in the alleyway and one of them backing up to give access to the other. My envision hitting the gas meters that are in the alleyway.
Yep, and I I think that
I can't imagine a worse situation to get in and out of a business from a main road.
It isn't designed to be our primary um entrance. I think it's more just an opportunity uh addition to the the entrances that currently exist. Um, and we're happy to explore any uh possibilities that the township believes would be appropriate to to make a easement like that safe. I know we've thrown around the idea of like a um, some sort of indication system or or a a low decibel kind of flashing light warning system as as ideas. Uh, we just wanted to make it effectively known at this stage that, you know, we're happy to to whatever we can do in our power, um, have that be a benefit, not a drawback is is a part of our proposal.
Thank you, Travis, and um so I see Trustee Chick wants to speak, but Marcus, uh, are are you there? Can you explain why you asked for that mirror? And, you know, and this, my my take on it is it's a downtown type environment, and people know how to go in and out at alleys when they park, um, but and the mirror helps, but I think Marcus noted this issue and thought about it, so maybe it'd be helpful to hear from him.
Yeah, so, I I mean, I I totally agree, this isn't an ideal situation. Um, but you're you're dealing with an existing site. Um, that has the constraints that it has with the width of the the existing pavement. So that really the only alternative um to utilizing the entrance that exists is, I guess, the two alternatives, either don't use the lot at all, or the second would be remove a portion of the building or the neighboring building to get the full width. Um, so, in my opinion, the applicants doing everything short of demolishing the building that they can do to um, improve the safety, which is in the, it's part of their proposal, what they have direct control over uh, is providing the mirrors to uh give the vehicles the that line of sight um, for pedestrians and a vehicle that may be wishing to turn in or out. Um, and then also uh condition of the approval uh to be uh, they record that cross access easement, which at that time, once that infrastructure's in place, then you can make a determination about um limiting the, that the entrance off Main Street to one direction. You could look at what, whether in or out makes the most sense at that time. Um, so, I I agree, it's not ideal, but um, it's an existing site with existing access, and I I don't know that you can um, you know, restrict them from from using um the site access they have.
If I may add, we've also discussed a valet system where we would have valet attendants, parking cars uh, which might take some of that issue out of it.
Suffice to say, it's it's an existing feature of our lot that we want to create as beneficially as possible, and we're open to township concern being a priority when we make those decisions.
I guess the one other thing I would add, um, as part of their proposal, they're um adding the delineated parking spaces on Main Street. Um, which includes the handicap uh accessible space on the front edge there. So, you know, I I think the, the idea would be, I don't I don't know what the turnover is on as far as customers, but um, I would expect that employees would be parking in the back and customers would be using the non-street space if available. Um, and then the the back lot is sort of a second option, so that that helps as well.
Any other comments on that? I I I feel uh in the future, it could be a directional one way. Um, if everything um comes to fruition on the proposal, so uh, perhaps, Mr. Lippens, uh, you can make note of that, and um, in the future, if it arises um, you can address it administratively. Um, anyone, any other commissioners? Uh, Ms. Chick?
Yeah, so I've been back there, and everything that Mr. Dwyer's commented on regarding, uh, you know, people coming in, people trying to get out. Um, uh, people having to actually move over the sidewalk for um, before they are able to see if there's anybody on the sidewalk. I mean, that's been the condition of that entrance to that parking lot back there for decades. Um, I did note that uh that tavern, which has more visibility on either side actually puts signs up on either side of the building and warning people to stop, you know, take a look first before they proceed. There's pedestrians, I mean, there's there's signage you can do to it'll help it, you're not going to alleviate the issues if they can get the parking in the back um, and use that uh with an access to seventy five Barker, that'd probably be the most ideal uh, use of that parking lot back there. And there is parking out front, there is some parking on the street. So, yeah, it's uh something you're just going to have to deal with, it's, other cities have the same issue, South Lyon has the same issue. Uh, Brighton has the same issue, it's just a condition of, that's the way it's been, so that's my comment.
Thank you, Ms. Chick. Uh, anyone else have questions or comments, concerns on the site plan? Um, okay, then I'll go into some of my questions. On the site plan review application, it was dated um in April, April thirtieth, twenty twenty, some time ago, but um you have checked off a a building addition. Can you confirm or describe what you're referring as the building addition on that application, gentlemen?
Yeah, so we have the portion uh that's obviously going to be the dispensary. And then next to it, we are uh renovating the building as well. We're going to renovate it all at one time, and that will be a separate business, non-marijuana related. So we're adding businesses to the downtown, not marijuana related as well. And we've, you know, we've asked, you know, the community, we've asked a lot of people, you know, um ideas, and we've gotten a lot of feedback, and we'll find the right tenant, and we'd be willing to work with the township on that as well. But we will have a a non-marijuana related business in in downtown.
So a more direct question would be this, are you changing the footprint of what we're looking at?
No, I don't believe so.
Thank you. So really, it's not an addition, although you're going to be doing some remodeling.
Well, yeah, so there's two separate show, there's two separate, there's actually three buildings, so we're going to make two of the buildings, the dispensary, and then then there's another, but I mean, it's all attached, if if that's your question, yeah.
Yeah, the could, my concern is we're reviewing a site plan, and you marked that uh you marked that you'll be building additions, so that's why I'm trying to confirm at this point. Your intention is not to change a footprint of the structure, is rather than renovate what's existing.
Correct.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to clarify. Thank you. And um, so we have um a few issues on the site plans. Um, I think it's just um it's minor, it's uh some directional issues. Um, if someone can answer a question, I have, if you go to page A two of your plans, that's the elevations. Um, the directions are incorrect. Uh, your west elevation is on top. Your south elevation is in the middle. And your east elevation is on the bottom, so basically the front of your building's the east side. Am I correct, gentlemen?
Yep.
Yes, that's correct. The elevations are labeled incorrectly.
Okay, so not only do we have incorrect directions, elevations on the planes, we now have them incorrect on the review. So I'm going to step us through this and correct them, so we don't have to revisit this. And perhaps, Mr. Lippens, you can confirm, uh, you'll make note of what we go through and however you see fit to make the make the corrections. Sound good? Thumbs up. Okay, so um I did have, and I'll ask a couple of questions as we go through it. So I just wanted to verify on the east elevation or the be the front of your building. Um, the existing stone veneer is to be removed and replaced above the first four windows. Am I correct on that, gentlemen?
Yes, that's correct.
Very good, because it's in pretty rough shape.
Yep.
Um on uh, it'd be page C one dot one, and I believe that's um that is your entire site plan from looking from above. Uh, what is it, what exactly is being added to the parking lot landscape? Can someone go through that with us?
Uh, we've, we're adding uh evergreen screening from the par- property to the south and a couple of deciduous trees at the edge of the parking. Just to create a temporary screen until the easement is approved and we move forward with that.
So in other words, uh, if there is an easement, all that's coming out, is that correct?
Yeah, we're gonna plant trees that are s- small in caliber in order for them to be transplanted as part of the overall connection scheme.
Well, I appreciate that there's an alternative. I mean, we don't know, uh, you know, if ever the the uh proposed uh easement or alleyway we can work out, but at least we're showing that if not, you're gonna have screening there, so I just want So I just wanted to verify that. Really, the size of my plans is illegible, so that's why I wanted to verify.
Sure.
Okay. So we'll go to Mr. Lippens and applicant to number seven on the review. Wait a second. Be the signage. So I just want to correct. I want the correct elevations referred to there. So it would be sheet A2 shows a six by two proposed wall sign with text to be determined. It would be the east on the east elevation facing Main Street. Additionally, two project projecting signs are shown on the again, east exterior elevation. Right? Very good. We'll go to number eight. It's describing its architecture is describing the materials you're going to use about the third line. Large storefront windows on the north exterior that should be east also. And it goes on to talk about benches depicted wood accent material shown on the north again, east elevation along Main Street as the correction. And my last comment would be on the the last, the last sentence in number eight, it says the south and west, it would be west, not east, exterior elevations show one proposed insulated and painted metal door and frame. The existing patio and stair configurations and window units are to remain. I would like Mr. Lippens to note that. Provide the existing patio and stair configuration, provided it meets current building standards as a as a condition or as an administrative condition, however, whatever you see is best. I see Mr. Lippens thumbs up. Gentlemen, do you have any concerns, questions on what I just addressed? Applicant?
Oh, not at all.
No, okay. Thank you. That's all I have. Is any I'll give it one more chance. Anyone else have questions, comments? Seeing none, I will make a motion to table a recommendation on case JPC 200005 site plan until immediately following the recommendations for the remaining applicants for conditional use and site plan approvals. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Ms. Chick. Any questions on that? Seeing none, go to roll call vote. Mr. Zarzaki?
Ms. Chick?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzno?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Ms. Infante?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Zarzaki, yes, six approved.
Thank you. Thank you, Dream Guys Group. Appreciate your your comments.
Thank you very much.
Pleasure.
Thank you.
So Chair, if I may, just a logistical point. I think I remove when I tried to make our panelists here attendees. I removed them from the meeting. So now we have folks from the GS Ashley team and folks from the Treehouse Wellness team all as panelists, and I'm reluctant to remove everybody again because I don't want to kick them out of the meeting again. So I just ask everyone to keep your videos off so that Planning Commission can keep their discussion and going and we'll move everyone who's not a planning commissioner, keep your videos off.
And also mute, please.
And please mute as well. And then we do have one more case on the agenda tonight. So.
Are are those people present, Mr. Lippens on the Zoom? If not, I would like I would move to make a seven minute.
Sorry, I see Keesh has his hand up. Let me let Keesh into the meeting as a panelist, and he can let us know if he has others on his team here this evening.
Okay, you can do that. Commissioners, I'd move for a seven minute break.
Agreed.
Ms. Infante supports. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 I think we all have it. We'll take seven minutes. Mr. Lippens, and you can make adjustments on the applicants, okay?
Yep, I'll work on it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
See, the chair is back. I think we're still on break. But Keesh, are you there?
Yep, I'm here.
Great. I'm wondering if there are others on your team that I should promote to the panel?
It's just going to be me speaking.
Okay, great. I'll take this opportunity just to let our past participants know that during the break, I did figure out how to change your status to back to attendee. And I apologize if anyone got cut off while I was figuring out and finding those controls, but I did I did find them and we should be good. We got Keesh here and we're waiting for the commissioners to return following the recess.
I'm back.
I heard you, Ms. Infante. So it looks like we're all present. Am I correct? Three, four, five, six, yes. So we'll resume. New business item E. I make a motion open for discussion case JPC 2000007 recommend to approve, approve with conditions or deny the request of Whitmore Wellness Pure Buds 8475 Main Street Whitmore Lake for conditional use to develop the property into a retail provisioning center. Retail and provisioning centers are permitted as a condition of land use in the GC General Commercial District per Article 14, Section 36 dash 391 of the zoning ordinance. The parcel numbers B dash 02 dash 08 dash 250 dash 017 and zone GC General Commercial District. With that, we will go to the applicant. If you can make a presentation on both the conditional use and your site plan reasonably within 10 minutes, and then we will go to Mr. Lippens' report and Mr. McNamara at the site plan portion.
Thank you. So first of all, thank you, Planning Commission, for having the special meeting tonight. I'm going to try to keep this short and sweet. My name is Keeshan Satarya, also known by my nickname Keesh. And I'm sure you guys are all familiar with the site 8475 Main, which is Barbara Downe. To take a quick step back and share some information about all the projects that my group has going on in the township, and we have about 130 acres of land on North Territorial Road right across from Jomar that will be developing into a business park. We have those plans in with the township right now that are under review. That park's going to be housing our grow and processing facility as the anchor tenant, as well as we have four other lots in that park that will be available for new businesses to come and co-locate in. We'll be working very hard to market and develop those other lots as the developer of the park. We'll be utilizing that grow and processing facility to provide high quality, clean and tested medical and adult use products through our retail store, Pure Buds. You'll notice in our site plan that there's actually two businesses that are proposed. One's the conditional use Pure Buds and the other is an ancillary convenience store called Pure Market. I live down the street on North Territorial in Plymouth, and we have a really nice market called Picnic Basket that will be modeling the market off of. It'll just be, you know, a smaller scale. You'll notice on the site plan that we've removed some parallel parking spots. We've added a rear awning. We have about 24 parking spots there. You know, we really tried to work hard to meet all of the ordinance requirements and work with the planner and all the feedback that they provided us. Our team's got extensive experience in remodeling as part of the application that we submitted back in January of 2020. We submitted pictures of a lot of our high quality remodeling efforts for retail stores as well as commercial facilities. Our team's got the construction experience, the experience of hands-on operations, and the capital bring these projects to fruition. I welcome any comments or any questions that you guys may have. Thank you.
Thank you. I apologize. I failed to get a support and a vote.
Of support.
Supported by Ms. Chick. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it. No opposition? Okay, I'm sorry about that. So with that, we will go to Mr. Lippens for his review on the conditional use.
Thank you, Chair. I am recommending approval of the conditional use. Subject to some of the conditions we discussed in the prior cases. Again, my recommendation would be that if the board or Planning Commission doesn't recommend approval, that they don't deny the use, but rather table it to allow us to work with the applicant. But I do want to mention that the Pure Bud, Pure Market application received marijuana facility voluntary local development agreement score of six and a supplemental scoring valuation of of 20. You know, initially, we didn't see documentation about cannabis business experience, but to be responsive to what the township's looking for, Keesh's team went out and hired a consultant to supplement their knowledge base, which is consistent with what we want. I mean, we want applicants that actually do their best to meet those substantive criteria that was approved by the board. So there, this in my most recent scoring evaluation is one of two applications that were not not tied. So we've got six remaining applications. Four of them are tied. This application is not tied. I still would recommend that a decision to approve a conditional use for Pure Bud and Pure Market does is supported by findings about why they have addressed the the criteria. And what about their proposal? It will be valuable to the community. But I'm noting that I'm not requesting additional criteria because of a score tie or any additional criteria because there are other facilities within 1,000 feet. One clarification I want to make on my conditional use letter is today, when I was reviewing the packet, I did find that there was an error in my letter. I had stated it states that there are applications within 1,000 feet. There I'm going to submit a revision for your next packet to that letter that states there are no other sites with. no other sites within one thousand feet that filed a site plan and conditional use application. So that is a remnant. We did receive a marijuana facility application for a site adjacent to this, but that application did not file a site plan and conditional use application. So for the purpose of this evaluation, I would say there are not pending, pending applications within a thousand feet of this site. So that is a clarification I want to make specifically to my letter. If you do choose to table the application tonight, I'll issue a revision with a clarification with that. And Chair, I'll also make the conversation, the clarification to my letters about the definition of the ordinance that we are, we've defined them as retail, not as adult use. We didn't use that term. So I agree with that clarification, and I will make it on this, this proposal as well. And I'll hold comments on the site until the site plan discussion, but just to reiterate, I do think this is a great proposal. I think it does substantively meet the conditional use applications. You know, Keisha mentioned he has another application which we'll be reviewing soon. And I think because this is uniquely situated outside of one thousand feet of any other opportunity and for other reasons, I'm certainly supportive of this request for conditional use.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lippens. Commissioners, any comments, questions regarding the conditional use on this case? Seeing none, I will ask to, for the record again, and Mr. Lippens just noted that he'll make the changes. Marijuana retailer and provisioning centers, correct terms I think we want to use, and it also is in A1 of the review, Mr. Lippens, just so you know. And to the conditional use, I have questions perhaps Mr. Lippens can answer or the applicant. Number eleven. Request a note stating compliance with the standard be added to the site plan. Other applica-, other applications have this so noted, Mr. Lippens. So can I get a clarification or explanation from the applicant?
Yep, I'm just pulling up our site plan here, the right page.
Yeah.
Are you stating number eleven from my letter?
Yes, the conditional use.
Establishes and facilities must ensure any water emanating from the establishment meets or exceeds applicable state environmental standards?
Yes.
And your question is?
Well, there's not a question. The other, it seems to be that the standard is that the notes were notes were stated on the standard, on the site plans, and in this case, they're not.
Oh.
There a reason for that?
Well, I believe that might just be an omission on sheet C zero point one. I think line item number twelve, you know, covers that, covers that point.
Yeah, I think Larry, to concur, I think that I intended to say that that note was was provided on the site plan.
Okay, is that the same case with number twelve, the one right below it? Regarding ensuring any water emanating from the establishment meets or exceeds the applicable state and local environmental standards?
Correct. Yes, I think what I accidentally did there was take off and underline what I meant to put a statement that says the note had been.
From the applicant, is that also included on the page that you cited?
Yeah, so if you go to page C zero point one, line number eleven and twelve are those notes that you're requesting.
Thank you very much. So Mr. Lippens will make that correction also? Thank you.
Correct, I will, and I appreciate the attention to detail on that, Chair.
Any other comments, questions regarding that conditional use on the case? I'm seeing none from the commissioners. In that case, I will make motion to table case JPC two zero 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 seven. Conditional use recommendation until immediately following the recommendations for the remaining applicants for conditional use and site plan approvals. I think Ms. Okay, you have the motion. Any questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none, do roll call vote, Mr. Zarzaki.
Ms. Chick?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzno?
Yes.
Mr. Dryer?
Yes.
Ms. Infante?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Zarzaki, yes, passes with six.
Thank you, and I'll make motion open for discussion case JPC two zero 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 seven recommend to approve, approve with conditions or deny the request of Whitmore Wellness Pure Buds eight four seven five Main Street Whitmore Lake. Site plan approval to develop the property into a retail provisioning center. Retail provisioning centers are permitted as conditional land use in the GC General Commercial District per Article fourteen, section thirty-six dash three nine one of the zoning ordinance. The parcel numbers B dash zero two dash zero eight dash two five zero dash zero one seven and zone GC General Commercial District.
Support.
Reported by Ms. Chick. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Unopposed? None. With that, we will go to the report, the site plan report of Mr. Lippens, followed by Mr. McNamara of O H M.
Thank you, Chair. We are recommending approval of the site plan this evening. Again, with a condition that they do receive their conditional use approval from the board. And if part of our condition is that if they do, they do not receive that approval, that we would be able to work with the applicant to find a suitable use for the site. Again, you know, the applicant has also proposed the Pure Market as part of this site plan. Certainly, a conditional use is not required for that. So that element of the site plan could move forward, even if they, they are not successful in obtaining that conditional use from the board. Although we have recommended that they do, and we are recommending site plan approval. Related to details of the site, I think in additional to the, to the fact that this is Barbara Downs, and most people know it because it's across the street from Township Hall. Planning Commission's also reviewed this site a number of times for expansion in the past several years. So we know that the current owners of Barbara Downs have made efforts to bring that site into conformance with the ordinance already. I think Keisha's following through on some of the ideas that Planning Commission has previously requested as part of that site. And we're certainly satisfied with the improvements and including exterior renovations to the building. And I'll let Marcus follow up with any of his comments.
Evening. As Paul mentioned, you know, the site not that long ago went through the process. So site improvements were made as part of that, so we don't have anything else outstanding engineering-wise. The one thing I will, I guess, just mention, they are removing the existing parallel parking spaces along the driveway, which is a good thing for safety and for circulation. So we're not changing the pavement limits, but with some restriping or eliminating the parking strip in there. It's an improvement to the site. So we didn't have any other comments that need to be addressed.
Thank you, Mr. McNamara. And for the record, we did receive the review by the fire department with no issues. So with that, any questions, comments on the site plan from the commissioners? Mr. Kuzno?
Just, it appears though the parking area in the back closer to the highway is crossing the property line. What's happening there? That's specific to this site, and I have a general question as well, but please someone answer that one.
I'm looking at the site plan here. That is not our intention whatsoever. I believe there might just be some, some errors within the CAD file. We'll have that tightened up.
I don't know if that's an existing condition or if that was something that's proposed and agreed to with an extra neighbor or whatever. So it looks kind of odd.
The, the, you know, the only change that we'll be making to the parking, we'll be adding a parking lot island, a landscape island there as per the ordinance.
With the tree there?
Yep.
Okay. What is the market? What is the, you know, the idea of the market? What are we, what are we selling there? And how does it tie in with the cannabis business?
So the, the market is a, is a non-cannabis-related use. It's just gonna be essentially an upscale convenience store. Like I mentioned, in Plymouth Township, we have a nice store along those lines called Picnic Basket. So just, you know, being able to have somewhere along Main Street toward the south side of Whitmore Lake there where some of the residents that potentially live across the street or live in the neighboring communities can stop in, grab a drink, grab a snack. You know, for those who are not interested in any marijuana products, they would never have to interact with the back of the building or, you know, ever enter into Pure Buds at all. The building is segregated into two separate suites. Suite A, which houses the market, and Suite B, which houses the dispensary.
And you will own and operate both of those businesses?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Zarzaki? Did you have a question?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're finished, Mr. Kuzno. Am I correct?
Yes, I'm done.
Anyone else have questions, comments on the site plan review? Since there are none others, I'll ask the applicant. Can you explain?
There is one more thing.
Who's that?
Just one other thing.
Yes, go ahead.
Kuzno.
Yep.
All right, so this is a question to Paul. It's related to if we, if we table, so we're tabling the site plan to go before we get conditional use from the we're tending both conditional use and site plans at this point in time. And we get to the end of this process, and we recommend three of the six for, for the board to approve, correct? Are we, is this our last stab at all these site plans is my question, I guess. So once, once we recommend conditional use and they get it from the town board, is the site plan automatically approved at that point in time, or do we get another shot at these things?
For the three cases on your agenda this evening, my recommendation is for you to approve the site.
I'm talking about all six of them. If we, whichever three we send to the township board, or they, whichever ones they approve at the township board, is the site plan automatically approved at that same time, or does that come back to us?
Okay, you mind? Planning Commission approves the site plan. So you would have the option of either tabling a decision on the site plan until after the board makes, takes action on a conditional use. Or you could recommend approval of a site plan or essentially approve the site plan with a condition that they obtain conditional use. At that point, if they're, if they don't obtain a conditional use, that condition of your site plan approval would not be met. So that's why I said if they don't obtain the, the conditional use, we would bring them back to, to Planning Commission to see if they would entertain another use for the site. As opposed to
Dividing.
Essentially, letting a good site plan hang out there with no use be established. You know, we want to facilitate a productive use of these sites with the applications. And, and the reason why I was started my comment by talking about the site plans on your agenda tonight is you know, all of these three site plans are prepared professionally and offer a good benefit if, if, if these sites are put to a productive use. These are good improvements.
I agree.
Okay.
As, as an additional comment to Mr. Kuzno's question, I believe the commission's intent is to send all six applicants for, for a decision at the board. I, I, Mr. Kuzno's broke up. I don't know if anyone else can hear him.
I'm saying we're gonna send all six back for conditional use decisions by the board, correct?
They'll have a recommendation by the Planning Commission on all of them. It could be approved, approved with conditions, denied, but we're going to forward recommendation all at once for them to determine which of the applicants receive license.
Okay. Yeah.
Correct, Mr. Lippens? Want to verify?
Uh, you know, I, I would say correct that that is what Planning Commission has asked, asked for. But we still have to do the meeting on the other three. I would say based on our, our meeting tonight, depending on the action you take on this site plan for the, the Pure Buds Pure Market Group, we certainly have three applicants that we've recommended that for, and Planning Commission is towards the end of the last case on that, the agenda. So I think the goal for three would have been met, you know, or could potentially be met by the end of this, this meeting tonight.
I believe Mr. Kuzno's concern is do we get to see the site plans again? And so that's why I reviewed the site plan as best as I could with the timeframe. And if there's something outstanding that you may see as a commissioner, please bring it, bring it on tonight so that we can possibly trust it to, to review again or make it a condition of the site plan. So if that helps any.
Well, it seems like there's it's there's issues that are up in the air in a car so far. And it seems like we should be giving some direction on site plan when, if, and when the, the participants here tonight are given the conditions from the board. Whether it be, whether it be direction of driveways or whether it be any number of things. So I don't feel like we're, we're fully done on the site plan side of things, even though they are nicely done. I don't think we've resolved everything on site plan at this point. Would that come through? Am I being heard?
You are being heard. So I'd like to keep my comments to the case that's, that we're actually discussing on the agenda right now. And I know Commissioner Kuzno, you mentioned the, the question on the the lot lines on the site plan?
Yeah. Yes.
And I think there'd be an opportunity for the applicant to potentially address that either with a note explanation or even a revision if there is something on that plan that should be fixed for your, for, for the next meeting. for your, for, for the next meeting, which is a pretty quick turnaround. But, you know, the, the intent with all these applicants was to address any comments. But of course, that's just prior to Planning Commission discussion. So we know that often things are caught here or, or and questions come up that you'd like to see addressed. So I think Commissioner Kuzno, you're right. If these are things you want addressed, that's why we've had the discussion and our intent with tabling these applications was then also to place them on your next agenda where you could make recommendations to approve. The one thing I will note is that you can always add something like that that comes up as an administrative approval. For instance, that the township engineer and planner will confirm that the right of way lines are active, accurately shown on the site plan. And usually if, if it doesn't result in any changes to the site plan, I'm usually comfortable handling those types of things administratively. But it all also depends on Planning Commission's comfort. So just to share with you one option, you could say, I want to table this site plan now, but forward the conditional use to the board. And, you know, we'll look at this, these last few site plan changes in several weeks. So, you know, Planning Commission is the, the approving body for the site plan. So you're not forwarding to that, that to the board. You should approve it with any conditions you think are warranted based on zoning requirements and any administrative approvals that you're comfortable with delegating to staff. We can discuss those at the meeting. I hope that's helpful.
That, that is helpful, Mr. Lippens, but I, I also want to make clear that I understand what you said. With these items that we had brought forth on the site plans for these first three applicants, they should not have opportunity to make all the changes for the next time. In other words, we're, we're making the discussion and any issues, clarifications, comments on these site plans tonight. But I don't feel these three applicants should have opportunity to make changes and come back at it again when we are just going to review the next three and make a decision the same night. Is that, is that, is that clear? And I, and I believe all the items that we have so far can be as conditional uses to the site plan, or as Mr. Lippens suggested, that we can table the site plan, but forward the conditional use recommendation. So either way, I, I don't think that these three applicants should be making alterations to their, to their submittals by next meeting.
I agree practically. I don't think we can do that. So we shouldn't ask them to do it. And Chair, I also agree with your statement that I, I, it's in my opinion that the, the things we've discussed tonight are relatively minor and could be handled administratively as part of an approval. A recommendation to approve.
Thank you. I also see Mr. Dwyer had a comment.
No, I'll hold till the end. I think we should just move on with this current applicant and then my general comments, I'll hold to the end.
I agree. So I think no one else had comment where we left off, but I was going to go over a few questions on the site plan. On the site plan review application dated 5/14/2020, there's a check off for new construction. Can the applicant please clarify or explain any new construction on the site plan?
So there, there is no new construction aside from the awning. You know, we didn't necessarily know which checkbox would fall under the renovations interior.
Okay. So for the record, there's no new construction as shown on the site plan review app.
Yes.
Thank you. And again, Mr. Lippens, with the, the language correction that you're going to make marijuana retailer provisioning center, it's also under the zone zoning and use part of this review, just so that you're aware of that.
Thank you, Chair.
Yeah. Number nine, architecture. So in reading Mr. Lippens' report on number nine, there was a request made for elevations and prior reviews, and there are no provided building elevations. So I would like to understand why in comparison to the other applications we've received. From either Mr. Lippens or the applicant.
Um, so in my, in my opinion, because we've looked at this before, I wouldn't necessarily want to hold it up waiting for elevations, but I'm looking to make sure and confirm, Keesh, so was there, did you supply elevations and my team missed it? I mean, I might as well just ask.
No. So, you know, as, as part of our follow-up from the meeting that we had last week, I was under the impression that the, the color exterior render would suffice for the site plan. And then when we submitted for our building permits that, you know, that's when the full drawing package would be requested. I have elevations I can provide them to, you know, right after this meeting. I just wasn't, I wasn't aware that that was necessary at this point.
Thank you for the answer. Mr. Lippens, I think we've made it clear before, I think, about site plans and missing elevations. But regardless, if the applicant has them available, I think it's a point that those should be included. So whichever way, if that becomes a condition, I don't see it as a, a problem since they've already have them.
I think, yeah, fair enough. I think Keesh, if you can forward that to our team, Planning Commission would be interested in seeing them.
Yep.
Thank you.
That's all I have on site plan review questions. Is there, are there any others? Seeing none, I will make a motion to table recommendation on the site plan for case JPC 200007 until immediately following the recommendations for the remaining applicants for conditional use and site plan approvals. Is there support? Supported by Ms. Infante. Any questions, comments on that? Seeing none, we'll go to roll call vote, Mr. Zarzaki.
This chair?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzno?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Ms. Infante?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
There's a yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Keesh, I said that right, right? I hope. Okay. If, moving on with our agenda, Mr. Iqueno is available. I believe he can return.
I am here, sir. Thank you.
Is there any problems with that or issues with the commissioners, Mr. Iqueno?
No, sir.
I see none. Okay, so we go to approval proceeding minutes from August 19th, 2020. I make a motion to approve and dispense with reading.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Iquento. Any questions, comments, or corrections on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Aye. Mr. Lippens will go to final call to the public.
Thank you, Chair.
Please state their name and address in limited to three minutes.
Great. At this time, public, we will open it up again for comments. As the chair said, please do state your name and address so that it can be recorded for our minutes. And you will have three minutes and I will facilitate. At this time, I do see David Gordon requesting to make a comment. Mr. Gordon, I have unmuted you and you have three minutes.
Thank you very much. It was a real pleasure to see these three applicants, their conditional use permit and site plans. It was a real change to actually see a developer of some sort walk into the community who has actually looked at the master plan. And in this case, the downtown strategic plan and the North Village plan and make their projects fit the visions according to the plans that we've spent a lot of money and community involvement to create. So I think that's fantastic. I wish other developers would do the same thing. I'm hoping that, that these marijuana establishments help revive downtown and with the construction of a beach and a park, it, it might be surprising how quickly you see a resurgence in Whitmore Lake becoming a destination location and a very shiny, shiny place to hang out. So continue the good work. I appreciate what the Planning Commission is doing. And I hope the board makes the right choice also regarding the various projects that are in front of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. I appreciate your comments. Anyone else from the public interested in speaking this evening? If so, please raise your hand. And we will acknowledge you and allow you to speak, members of the public. I'm pausing and kind of talking slow to give you a chance to raise your hand, but I'm not seeing anyone. So Chair, if, if you want to give them another minute, we can, but probably most people have the hang of this by now. Oh, I see another, another person is taking us up on the offer. I'm seeing Adam. I believe it's still Adam Onley would like to speak. Adam, I'm going to allow you to speak. Adam, I think you're, can we hear you? Oh, sorry. One more time. Adam, I think I have, this now allowed you to speak.
All right. Adam Only, 9315 Lakewood Court. Speaking of the master plans and Mr. Gordon's first call of the public about North Village, the, the master plan for North Village has three scenarios. So stating that the North Village master plan is 50% park is just one scenario. Scenario one is park only. Scenario two has majority park and little development. And then there's also a scenario three, which is more intense park with mixed use and high development. So I just want to be sure that everyone listening knows that there isn't just one scenario for the master plan for North Village. People are picking and choosing which one they like and quoting it. So thank you, Planning Commission, for handing this professionally. And I look forward to the next, the next meeting with the next candidates. Have a good night.
Thank you. Thank you, Adam. Appreciate it. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak in this call? I'm not seeing anyone.
Thank you, Mr. Lippens. We will go, comments from the commissioners, Mr. Kuzno.
Can I ask a question or not? Can you hear me?
Yeah. Yes. You may. Yes, you may.
So what I heard you say at the last, at the last discussion, Larry, was, and I was hoping this was the case, your intent or the planning together could intend to all six of these conditional uses to the board. Let them decide which three get it. And then we get, then, then depending on what we did on the site plan, we are either going to act again on site plan or approve it at our next meeting, basically. Is that true?
Is that accurate, Mr. Lippens? I want to confirm with Mr. Lippens.
Yes, I believe Commissioner Kuzno, the way you stated it is, is exactly how I understand it too. So either at your next meeting, you will act on the site plan and approve it pending a conditional use approval. In which case, if all conditions are met, you will not necessarily see the site plan again. But we'll provide updates as the project is implemented. If you make the decision to table, if you find that there's something you do want to look at again, you can still send it for conditional use approval and then work on the site plan parallel or even after the board decision. So I restated what you stated again, but I think we should understand each other.
That was good, but the, the one point I was trying to make sure is that we intend to send all six of the conditional uses to the board and they're going to decide which three get, get the permits. Is that correct?
Yep.
That's how I understand it.
I'm done.
Thank you. Mr. Dwyer?
So to beat a dead horse here, just to be clear, is it in any way, shape or form our responsibility, or is it appropriate for us in any way, shape or form to recommend one over the other rather than approve all six with no recommendations as to favorites? And if it is appropriate, how do we do that? If it's not appropriate, it's a moot point, but I'm still not sure what the answer is.
I agree.
Mr. Lippens?
And I think we've talked around that question in five different ways for several weeks now, and I still don't know the answer.
So I, I think that I'm going to provide you with a, a planning opinion here, right? So I've heard commissioners talk about what your preference would be for processing the case. And I've heard that it's, I think, a consensus of all commissioners. I haven't heard any commissioner say they don't prefer to send all of these to the board to make the approval. So, you know, my planning opinion is that I think that that's a prudent action. Because what you want is a clean decision. And if you choose to it, or, you know, if the board chooses to provide some type of precedence to one of these applications, they would want that to be a consistent recommendation and to, as I've recommended in, in my, my letters, provide findings that support that decision. So if you were to make a recommendation, I, I would recommend that you only recommend that the board state findings to support their decision and that you've found essentially the conditional use recommendations to be met, subject to conditions that I've recommended or any that the engineer recommended. You know, that being said, if there are any planning commissioners that don't, you know, have an alternate viewpoint, you should express that to your colleagues during the discussion. Tonight, you've tabled all of those cases. But part of the conditional use approval as outlined in the state is for Planning Commission to make a recommendation to the board. So it certainly would be appropriate for you to make a recommendation if you felt like you wanted to, if there was something you want to note to the board, you may make that part of your review.
So if, as individuals we did that, how would that be passed along to the board in the minutes? Because it
Well, so the way, the way it would work procedurally is someone would make a motion. And that motion would either be supported by one of your colleagues or not supported. that motion would either be supported by one of your colleagues or not supported. And so whoever makes the more motion would have the ability to include any of the findings or recommendations, right?
No, we're not getting anywhere. We're going to have six, six go to the board because there's nothing significantly wrong with any of them. But commissioners may feel three are better than others for whatever reason. Is it appropriate for us to somehow distinguish those three? And if so, what is the mechanism that individual commissioners can do that if it is appropriate? I'm still not getting that answer.
Well, it would be through your motion. It would be through the motion to the board. Your recommendation as planning commission is conveyed to the board via a motion to approve. So whoever makes that motion and whether or not that motion is seconded would be the person who was responsible for conveying, I think, that that opinion that you're asking for.
Can I ask a quick question? I'm so sorry, because this, these are exactly the questions I had, but my impression was that we were going to give a critique, our feedback on each of the six applicants and forward that information on. The conditional use and site plan issues are separate. I I think maybe that's what Commissioner Dwyer is looking for is what is the mechanism? Because it's the Board of Trustees who makes the approval decision. We can give detailed feedback on each or not. I I don't know. Maybe we can't.
Commissioner Infante, so the clarification I would make to your statement is that the it's the conditional use approval that is required in order to receive a marijuana facility application. And the review of the scoring of those marijuana facility applications is procedurally a part of your conditional review process. So there's one recommendation that is made. It's a recommendation to approve, deny, or approve with conditions, the conditional use application. Any recommendation you to your board would be a part of that motion. And I I don't think I can explain it any better than that. So we do have the township attorney at the meeting. If you have a procedural question about how to make a motion or the effect of your motion, we could ask her for a consult on that as well. But I I would say planning advice, don't complicate it. You're you've got conditional uses, and you have to you have to make a recommendation to the board. If you choose not to make findings as related to the marijuana facility applications as part of that conditional use approval, that's okay. You don't have to. But you what I am recommending is that you then recommend that the board do so.
Mr. Lippens, perhaps I can I can step in, too. So to answer both Mr. Dwyer and Ms. Infante, if you as an individual commissioner would like to give precedence to an applicant, you would have to include that in your motion. It would have to pass as a majority vote of the commissioners to be forwarded to the Board of Trustees. So if if that helps any. So my comments and my position on this whole matter, since we've started the beginning of this, the beginning of discussion for for quite some time now has been, I feel, me as one commissioner, I feel the plan, the planning commission should not be the ones setting precedent. It should be the Board of Trustees to to determine that and make their decision. So that's been my one constant opinion on this whole matter, if that helps anybody.
And I agree.
Okay, thank you. I know Mr. Kuzno had proposed the question. He has another question. We'll go back. I'd like to wrap the comments up. It's important that everyone understand. So I'll go back to Mr. Kuzno.
Great. This is important stuff. And I get, it says my internet connection is unstable. Can I, am I being heard?
Yes.
Okay. Now, I don't want to, I don't want to muddy the waters anymore, but each of these applications are applying two permits, correct? They're applying for retail and replying for medical. Are we, are we, are we recommending, can we for each of the applicants? And would they be willing to accept that?
I'm sorry, I missed some of what you said.
Yeah.
Broke up.
Oh. Okay, I'm sorry. So the idea is that there's each application to permits. Can we recommend a recreation or a retail on one and a medical on another one?
I can possibly answer that. And Mr. Lippens can concur. They were presented to us as together. They're they're they were presented to the planning commission and packaged as retail and provisioning center. So they would be two licenses under the applicant. And there's three available.
Three, three, three twos.
Three, three of each. There'd be six total. Two, there'd be two licenses per three, per three applicants. That's what the board decided the limit is. Am I correct, Mr. Lippens?
Correct.
Okay. Is that is that cleared up, Mr. Kuzno?
Yeah, got it.
Thank you. Mr. Dwyer, anything more? I saw, I thought you had a hand up.
Oh, I'm good. Understand.
I hope that helped your question. I don't know.
It did. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Ms. Infante.
No, it's been a long night. I do have questions, but we'll wait. Thank you.
Thank you. The Mr., oh, we'll go to Mr. Iquinto available? I don't see him. Ms. Chick?
So we had, the board had decided that they were going to schedule a special meeting to hear all of the presentations from the applicants on September 15. And apparently, there's been a conflict in the and as opposed to having a special meeting for hearing all of the applicants, the board is going to hear them all at a regularly scheduled board meeting as on September 20th, hang on, 22nd. Yeah. That came to the board today. I don't know if it's official, but I that's the plan right now, and I'm hoping that something will go out quickly to let people know and the applicants know that there will not be a special meeting on the 15th, that they're looking for a a regular schedule on the 22nd of September.
Thank you, Ms. Chick. Anything else, Mr. Zarzaki?
The only comment I have is if we are not, as as we are not picking favorites in this case, if an individual commissioner has a preference, they can go to the regular meeting and during the call to the public, make a statement there supporting one, two, three, whichever. That's anybody's option. They can also send a letter to the board stating their support for different ones, if that's their preference. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Zarzaki. I don't know if Mr. Lippens has a comment about that, but I would, I would prefer us make a joint decision as a planning commission rather than individually sending opinions to the Board of Trustees, but that's just my opinion. Perhaps someone else might have a different, but Mr. Lippens.
How would we do that?
So I I think that might be a good question for our attorney.
Yeah, that makes me uncomfortable.
I don't know. Mariah, are you available? Here we go. See, she's been here the whole time.
Because I've been sitting, I was standing up because I've been sitting for so long. I I think that Mr. Zarzaki's point is that as as residents of the township, you have the right to address the board. I do, I am a little bit uncomfortable with it coming as I think you would have to clarify that you're making that statement as an individual and not as a planning commissioner. And I do think that that could there's a potential that that could cause some confusion, but I I guess I'd like to think about it a little bit. I I don't necessarily think it's wrong. I just think that there's a way that it needs to be done so that it's clear that you're not making, you're not making a recommendation as a planning commissioner, which you know, so it's a little bit dicey because you have information that maybe other people don't have. Do you know what I'm saying?
That was my intent. It would be as an individual resident.
Yeah, so I I can, I can get you something more concrete when it's not 10:30 on a Wednesday. Right? Yeah, yeah. Mr. Roman, is that helpful?
It's helpful to me. I don't think you need to proceed with a clarification unless someone else needs it.
Okay.
As Mr. Zarzaki posed it, is there any any commissioner that would like it more clarified than that? Of course, I mean, we all have a right to speak as residents. It's our right.
Yes.
But as a, as a, I don't, I would never go and speak my opinion as a planning commissioner without a majority consensus or a majority vote or opinion on a subject to the board, I would hope.
Sounds good to me.
Thank you. So I don't think we need a clarification.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
I tried to get you through this whole thing with without being even questioned, but Mr. Lippens blew that, so.
I know. You were starting to wonder if I was actually here, I bet.
That's okay. Appreciate it.
Yeah, sure.
Anyone else? I don't have any comments. So with that, we'll go to announce the next regular meeting, September 2, 2020, and I make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Infante. Questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.